Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the team for half will get set up, but we'll just give them a minute and I will tap dance accordingly as they get established. But free, you know, just setting the stage, I think, for the broadly for the agenda today. As you can see, there's the three key updates. These are all for information. So these are designed to be introductions for new councillors. It'll be able to rehash certainly for for those incumbents who have returned. But it's an opportunity for discussion questions, right? As we introduce some of those key topics that are going to be germane to this council in terms of your decision making, not only really starting in January as it relates to Housing Accelerator Fund, but you know, I would offer for that first year of your term. So I think I've talked long enough. You know, Christina hasn't given me the secret sign yet, so good. But maybe I'll turn it over to Mr. Slatt, see if he's had any introductory remarks, and then we can vote.
Actually, I'll just start with, I think you've all met our planning and development director, Christina Peter. I'll turn it over to her and her team and she can begin.
Yeah, we're just gonna give Craig sit here and stare at him and make him really nervous while he tries to load up the presentation. But I guess I will start by just saying good morning to Mayor and members of council. I'm Christina Peter and I'm the Director of Planning and Development. I'm actually sitting here today for Katie Mahoney, who's the Planning Branch Manager, but she's the house has been struck with the standard colds that you start to see in December. So I'm gonna try and probably fail at taking her place, but she's given me some great notes, so I'm going to be reading them off to you. I'm here today with our colleagues Lori Scott. She's the Affordable Housing Liaison and Craig Walker, who's the Senior Planner in charge of the Housing Accelerator Fund or HAFs projects. We are excited here today to be here today. If you've got any questions, just I think we're gonna break the presentation out into three specific areas and we would ask that you hold your questions if you don't mind until we get to the end of each of those sections because there's a little to go through. Today's agenda might look short, but the presentation is long. This is because we have a lot of important information to share with you. We have broken the presentation into these sections and we'll help field question essay arise. We're gonna start with the quick introduction to the Planning Branch. Then we're going to spend some time talking about the Housing Accelerator Fund or HAF in general, what it is, the goals, the outcomes and the process. And when it comes to half, it's not one project, but seven separate yet related projects. So we'll spend some time getting into the details about the seven initiatives. And then finally, we will move into a more detailed overview of the amendments to the land use bylaw that we're bringing forward in January. And you'll be having, receiving those at council and you'll have the public theory to debate those changes. So this is the next slide, Craig. This is the mighty Planning Branch. They are a team of professionals consisting of planners, planning technicians and our affordable housing liaison. In the municipal, municipal government experience alone, collectively, they have over 170 years of experience. Specialty areas that they have include working on long range and policy planning, current planning, transportation planning, parks and recreation planning, rural planning, regional planning, urban design, geographic information systems and affordable housing. To anchor today's presentation, we wanted to highlight the strategic framework we are all working within. At the top, we have our Municipal Development Plan, our MDP, entitled Flourish. And within that plan, we have an entire chapter dedicated to the housing options. Within that, we have our goal of that St. Albert will accommodate a full and balanced mix of housing choices, meeting the needs of everyone at all stages of life. Next, we have the strategic council strategic plan. And this prioritizes community well being and advocating for housing options for everyone. Then we have the Corporate Business Plan. This is the work we're doing through HAF that is essentially the infill strategy. And finally, the HAF work has been deemed a council, a corporate priority project as well. That gives you reasons why this is a pretty important project and it spans not just only the Planning and Development Department, but we work with various groups across this organization. So we may be the face of it, but we do want to acknowledge all the hard work that everyone of our colleagues has put into this. So now we're going to talk about the HAF program and Lori will take us through this section.
Launched in 2023, the Housing Accelerator Fund or HAF is a $4.4 billion federal program towards accelerating housing supply through the provision of incentive based funding to municipalities. The HAF program is geared towards housing actions and goals addressing community needs in support of energy efficient, climate resilient communities. Housing affordability, flexibility and choice and inclusivity are key outcomes of the program. St. Albert was one of 241 communities across Canada that was successful in receiving HAF funding. St. Albert's Housing Action Plan is focused on creating housing flexibility and choice to drive systemic change to meet residents' needs while respecting neighborhood character thoughtfully and at a reasonable pace. Actions include exploring housing growth near key traffic corridors, making better use of existing infrastructure and transit services to reduce living costs, reviewing development regulations to add flexibility for housing choices at different life phases and streamlining development approval processes through electronic permitting systems while maintaining strong checks and balances. Other actions include exploring select public lands to create housing options benefiting the entire community, examining parking supply standards to right size requirements and identifying opportunities to add more homes in existing neighborhoods. The outcomes of the intensification servicing and growth studies will be used to inform future housing supply incentives, enabling responsible, thoughtful and sustainable development goals. HAF initiatives are closely monitored by CMHC through monthly semi annual and annual reporting processes. The city is required to meet project milestone timelines and report on housing supply growth targets measured and verified through executed building permit applications. Reporting processes to CMHC are used to determine eligibility for future funding advances. St. Albert's Housing Needs Assessment and Housing Strategy will be completed in 2026, which is also a key requirement of HAF and other federal grant programs, including regional and local transit funding, the Canada Housing Infrastructure Fund, Build Canada Fund Initiatives and the Canada Community Building Fund. Housing projections are based on three year period ending in December 2027. One year following, the city must have used all remaining funds and report on how funds were spent. The city has predicted it would be able to incent 302 additional housing units over the three year program term, which is a 24% increase over typical development levels. Program initiatives will help expand the numbers of units developed annually in perpetuity. St. Albert is planning for thoughtful housing growth to meet residents' needs while respecting neighborhood character to ensure change is manageable, responsible and community focused. Work on HAF started immediately after the contract with CMHC was signed in December 2024. CMHC publicly announced the city's funding in March 2025. Immediately afterwards, information was posted on the city's website on each of the seven HAF initiatives. The Capital Project Charter was approved by council in May, enabling administration to proceed with HAF expenditures. Progress reports on the HAF program were provided to council in July and November. Transparent, consistent and accessible information will be a strong component of the HAF program. An internal open house event was held in October and a public open house on HAF and proposed amendments to the land use bylaw was held in November 24. Future public events will be planned to clearly and effectively communicate with residents, developers, interest holders and council as initiatives move forward. Targeted engagement has already occurred through three questionnaires sent to the development industry and nonprofits. Targeted outreach will also be geared towards indigenous partners and other interest holders. Council will continue to be updated as initiatives progress. Information will be updated through the HAF webpage. What We Learned Reports will summarize the outcomes of engagement. The City's Cultivate the Conversation site will be used to gather feedback on public, where, from the public where appropriate. Advertising for events will occur through social media, the city's website and the St. Albert Gazette. Targeted newsletters will provide information on key milestones, initiatives and community impacts of HAF. All tools will be used to deliver consistent key messages directing audience to the city's website for full details, ensuring citywide awareness. Administration anticipating 302 housing units will be centered through St. Albert's seven approved HAF initiatives. These initiatives align with HAF program priorities and best practices and the city's strategic framework developed through the MDP, Corporate Business Plan and Council Strategic Plan. The orange, the orange bars on this slide indicate policy and process changes occurring over the first two years of the program, enabling the city to work towards achieving the projected housing units illustrated in blue through the remaining program term. The ePermitting Program will continue through HAF and expanding electronic permitting to other planning and development and building permit application processes. Key decision points for council will be in quarter one and quarter three 2026 and in quarter one 2027 as indicated by the green circles. Work will continue on the HAF program until the end of 2028, with changes to housing policy and processes leading to gradual thoughtful housing growth to deliver flexibility and choice for residents at all life stages. Turn it over to Craig Walker. He'll continue the presentation.
Thank you, Lori. And again, good morning, City Council. So all of you have heard that phrase, the whole is greater than the sum of its parts. And I want you to keep that in mind as we go through this next section because it's, I think it's very applicable to the HAF initiatives. So in this next section, we're going to overview all seven of them, explaining how they aim to work together in concert, aiming to increase housing supply, housing diversity and housing affordability, each of them from a slightly different angle, including reducing red tape, weakening regulations, streamlining processes and more. And after this overview, as Christina mentioned in the agenda, we're going to slow down a little bit and take a deeper dive into two of the initiatives which require a council decision in January to satisfy commitments made to the CMHC. So going through them in chronological order. Initiative one is known as the Transit Corridor Intensification Strategy. I'll point out the budget for this one is exactly half of the entire $11.8 million grant from the CMHC, just to give you an idea of the magnitude of this one as opposed to the following six. So the objective here is to facilitate mixed use and higher density residential development within up to 800 meters of St. Albert Trail, so roughly walking distance. So this initiative is about planning for more homes near major transit routes to create walkable connected neighborhoods that offer residents more choice, convenience and affordability. The work completed to date includes retaining a consultant, engaging with the development industry and drafting some guiding principles. So since then, there's been a lot of work underway and ultimately, once completed, those key deliverables will include growth and visual modeling, servicing analysis, drafting land use bylaw amendments. I mentioned we've began engagement with the development industry already. In the new year, once this project has advanced a little further, we plan to open that up more broadly to the, to the general public. And ultimately, where this is going is to a council meeting next September where we'll, where administration will be returning with some land use bylaw amendments. And subsequent to that, other recommendations pertaining to housing, infrastructure and financial incentives to achieve those housing targets that my colleague Lori mentioned. I realize one slide, council doesn't quite do this justice, but again, this is just introductory overview today. There will be more information forthcoming in the new year, once this project has advanced a little bit further. Moving on, initiative two is known as the Quick Win Regulatory Updates. The objective here is to amend the established neighborhood overlay. It's a part of our land use bylaw to reduce existing known infill barriers. So this one here is looking to simplify outdated rules and support housing that fits the character of St. Albert's established neighborhoods. Work completed to date includes sending a questionnaire to targeted representatives of the infill building and development industry. As Lori mentioned, there was a public open house a couple of weeks ago at Service Place. And then based upon that input, among other things, the proposed amendments to the established neighborhood overlay as well as a rationale document explaining them have been finalized. We're currently just sort of dotting the i's and crossing the t's, but those full documents will be available in the January Agenda Report. Speaking of which, the key deliverables will include a council decision in January on those land use bylaw amendments along with a public hearing. And if approved, it would result in updated land use bylaw regulations to the established neighborhood overlay. And again, we'll, we're gonna talk about this one later in the presentation. Initiative three is the Neighborhood Intensification Strategy. So several objectives to this one, including proposed land use bylaw amendments to achieve up to four units per lot on what we call a typical low density residential lot citywide. LDR is one of the, one of the many districts in the land use bylaw to facilitate broader, small scale intensification and to guide redevelopment of large infill lots, for example, maybe surplus school sites, among other settings. Long story short, in terms of the work and the deliverables, we've combined this with initiative number one for efficiencies. So, okay, initiative one is about transit corridor intensification. This one is about neighborhood intensification. There is a lot of overlap in terms of the work and the analysis or consultants. So those projects are being run in parallel. Initiative three, like initiative one, will also come before you with more information in the new year, ultimately seeking a council decision in September. So although initiative three is not the focus of today's presentation, we did think it would be prudent to spend at least one slide to clarify. Well, what do we mean when we talk about four units per lot? This topic has been in the media quite a bit over the past year. And we wanted to outline what does this mean and what doesn't it mean in a St. Albert context? So we've created some pretty simple graphics to communicate our message. But if you bear with me, I'll just go through them. So this little box with a house on it, this represents roughly 50% of the existing built up city of St. Albert today. It's one house on one lot. What's less common knowledge is that under current rules today, you can put in a basement suite as well as what we would call in the land use bylaw, a garden suite. So this is already allowed today on any low density residential lot in the city. So that's roughly 50% of the entire built up area. The CMHC needs us to get one more somehow. What they don't do is prescribe what that needs to look like. That is currently being analyzed and will return to city council for deliberations. But some of the circumstances that our consultant is exploring as well as the ramifications on things like utilities and transportation and those types of considerations. One example could involve a subdivision. So where you used to have one house, you could potentially subdivide that lot, each of which could have a garden suite. Likewise, same kind of thing going on a subdivision, but with a basement suite. Once again, a similar situation, but with a semi detached dwelling with either a garden or a basement suite. And again, I'd like to reiterate for city council, this too is also already allowed in the city, but only if the lot dimensions meet certain dimensions. So the consultant is examining, could we, could we tweak those regulations a little bit? And if so, what would some of the possible concerns be that we would have to investigate? Likewise, looking into potential triplex or quadplex, fourplex housing products. It doesn't, and I put the one with three on there just to demonstrate, it doesn't have to be four or nothing, right? The CMHC does require us to enable up to four, but it's not as if residents have to go from one to four, you know, zero to 100. If a landowner that owns a bungalow that's potentially approaching the end of its life cycle, if they want to go from one unit to two units or one to three or one to four, this all helps move the needle and meets our objective of increasing housing choice, housing diversity and housing supply. So these are other potential tools in that toolkit. Another possible solution, it's a minor nuance here, but you'll notice the, the fourplex on the left has subdivision lines through it. The one on the right does not. So potentially if potentially there's opportunity for a condominiumized or apartment product, all on the same lot, that's another solution the consultant is investigating. And if what we're calling horizontal density doesn't always make sense, there's also the potential to explore vertical density. Doesn't necessarily have to be four stories. You could picture, for example, two stories with back to front housing units. And there might be other scenarios that we haven't quite thought of at this point. So again, this is just an overview. Initiative three isn't the focus of today's meeting, but we did just want to spend one slide going over what this might mean and what it doesn't mean. Moving on to initiative number four. This is the Public Land Redevelopment Study. So the objective here is to develop a framework for repurposing what we presume to be surplus city owned lands for affordable housing. And not just that, not just developing another framework, but to actually do something with it, to actually proceed with a pilot project or pilot projects, plural. So by thoughtfully doing this, the city can make better use of public land and support communities now and into the future. Work completed today includes reviewing best practices so that we're not reinventing any wheels. We're checking out what other jurisdictions have done, who have done before us. We've developed a site evaluation matrix. And there's a analysis of all city owned land. Key deliverables as the project continues to unfold will include engagement with internal departments. Some of that's already begun, but it will, it will will be turning the volume up, so to speak, in 2026. And then once there's more information to share, engaging with the broader community sometime in Q2. And last but not least, we'll be coming to city council in November of next year with recommendations on both this framework as well as a potential pilot project to proceed with. Initiative five is the Electronic Permit Program. It's no surprise. It's actually what it sounds like it is. It's, it's looking to implement software to support more efficient processing of building, development and planning applications. So this will make those kinds of applications faster, simpler and more predictable for our essential city building partners in private industry. The work completed includes retaining a vendor and purchasing what they call their accelerated deployment package. We've completed our internal training manuals or materials, excuse me, as well as background work for software implementation and customization. The key deliverables include this quarter, in fact, potentially this week, a kind of a soft software launch for select kinds of permits. And then subsequent to that, expanding the program to include other application types. For example, maybe subdivision or redistricting over the following years and up until 2028. Initiative six is the Parking Regulation Study. The objective here is to implement solutions to surplus residential parking supply inefficiencies in the land use bylaw. It's a bit of a mouthful, council, but essentially parking is never free. Even when you park for free, somebody paid for it. And what we've heard from our development community is that when they are planning for underground parking in particular, in their performance, they will often throw in numbers that break it down to an average of $45,000 or more per underground parking stall. Even in a greenfield suburban context for a surface piece of asphalt, that can be eight to $15,000 per space. So if we can make sure the minimum that the city is requiring is better right size, we're not wasting parking that's not used. That's sort of the objective of this one. There is a, a report mentioned, or I'll back up. Within the Agenda Report, we reference a study that said that reducing parking along the lines of what we're proposing here can translate into a 10 to 20% cost reduction for certain types of housing products. So if this is something we can get right, it's something we want to bring forward for council's consideration. The work completed includes retaining a consultant. They undertook a parking utilization study and best practices review. We hosted a public open house, the same one that pertained to the established neighborhood overlay mentioned previously. And the key deliverables, again, this is one of these initiatives wrapping up that will be coming before you in January for a public hearing and decision. And obviously, if approved, it would result in updated land use bylaw regulations. We'll come back to this topic in a few slides. Last but not least, the Development Concierge Service. The objective here is to create a service for streamlining applications for non-market housing anywhere in the city or any kind of housing market or non-market housing in the downtown. So this aims to provide personalized guidance, streamlined application coordination and expert support from initial concept to project completion. The work completed includes sending a questionnaire to our partners in the nonprofit sector, examining best practices. And the service is now launched. In fact, we had our first general inquiry just yesterday about this from a nonprofit. So with everything more or less complete, the only deliverable that remains is to do a bit more targeted outreach and presentations to our partners in private industry and the nonprofit sector. So I mentioned with that overview.
Want to stop and ask, did you want us to continue on or did you have some questions that you wanted to ask about those, the last?
Lots of questions. We can wait till the end.
It makes no difference to me, yeah. Thank you. So city council, I mentioned, we're going to slow down now. So we've overviewed all seven, a bit of a whirlwind overview admittedly, but we're going to slow down now and just focus on the two that are coming before you next month for a decision. And actually, there are, there are three groupings of proposed city initiated land use bylaw amendments. So the first one we've talked about is the Established Neighborhood Overlay or Initiative Number Two. So these proposals involve changes which respect the character of older neighborhoods while allowing for more flexible and practical redevelopment. The second one we also talked about, this is the Residential Parking Supply Amendments. So these involve updates to parking supply requirements to better reflect the actual demand to support housing affordability, housing diversity and land efficiency. And then what we haven't mentioned until this slide is housekeeping amendments. So when, for those of you in council in the previous term, you'll recall that when the, what's now the current land use bylaw, we introduced this back in 2024. And one of administration's commitments was to monitor trends and assess what's working and what isn't, and to come back about a year later with proposed amendments. And the good news is most of them are really minor in nature for the most part. They're mostly clerical. They pertain to numbering, grammar, a few inconsistencies in figures or maps, a few definitions. There's the redistricting of a city owned parcel that already has a stormwater management pond on it. And for efficiencies, we're bringing all three of these together at the same time. Again, this is just an overview presentation today, but the whole redlined version of these changes will come before you in the next Agenda Report. So initiative number two, so diving deeper a little bit, but let's start off with what is the Established Neighborhood Overlay? So it was originally introduced back in 2006. It's an existing supplemental layer of land use bylaw regulations which apply to low density residential uses in St. Albert's established neighborhoods. So on this next slide here, I recognize it's a bit of a small map, but it's everything inside that pink line. So I mentioned previously roughly 50% of the entire city is districted low density residential. All of those low density residential lots within those established neighborhoods are subject to these additional rules and regulations. So the proposed changes. So the proposed changes include removing what I'll call contextual rules. So instead, it would use consistent development regulations instead of site-specific calculations that previously relied on neighboring properties for calculation. So to give you an example of what we mean, if there was a bungalow approaching the end of its usable life cycle and they were looking to maybe do renovations, add an extension, maybe add a second story, they possibly could, but it depends on the neighbors. And depending on the neighbor's height and floor area and setbacks and those types of considerations, they might be able to do that full extension to suit their growing family. They might be able to add that second story, but it depends. They might only be able to go what I call a baby step in the right direction. A few years later, though, when that neighboring bungalow that maybe was the the, the sort of, yeah, the limiting factor, when they choose to redevelop, now that their neighbor has proceeded with a baby step, now they could go full throttle, for lack of a better word, or they could go two baby steps or three baby steps. We're looking to get rid of that context, recognizing that over the next generation, these established neighborhoods are going to start to see transition, and we want to enable them to be all that the low-density residential district intends for them to be. So none of the permitted or discretionary uses are changing via these amendments. We're just making to, we're looking to make the existing uses easier to pursue. They're not dependent upon the neighbor and what they may or may not do. I mentioned supporting modern renovations. So again, slightly increasing the allowed height and floor area to make it easier to update older homes. This next one, the third bullet, it doesn't come up a ton, but providing greater flexibility for garage placement on corner lots. There's a few nuances there, depending on if it has a lane or if it fronts a street. We're, we're looking to add some flexibility to our development officers in collaboration with the transportation department. Streamlining decision-making processes. Right now, the regulations in this established neighborhood overlay are so complex, we actually require in the land use bylaw what we call an infill review meeting. So before a developer can actually submit an application, they need to chat with our staff to figure out, well, what are the setbacks? Because it depends on the neighbor. And so it's complicating and we're looking, it's complicated and we're looking to streamline that. And then just reducing duplication. We found that, okay, since 2006, some of the regulations from the broader low-density residential districts, we've kind of double dipped and put them in the established neighborhood overlay as well. So we're looking to reduce that duplication. If it's already mentioned in the, the base layer, the, the low-density residential district, we don't need to mention it again and cause confusion in the established neighborhood overlay.
And Craig, just before you go, I, I just want to state that it's not increasing the height or the lot coverage that's already allowed within the regulation. It's just not able to achieve it because it's got this extra layer of restriction. So anyone outside of that yellow area and the zoning in that yellow area will say allow for a building to be 11 meters tall. That's, we're not looking at extending that or changing that, but what it would do is, like Mr. Walker mentioned, we might actually limit that you can't go to 11 meters. That's within that regulation. So it's not, it's keeping the regulation as is, but applying it equally across all of those parcels.
Thank you, Espina, for that clarification. And yeah, so essentially, it's keeping up with present-day norms of the development industry and making sure that homes being built today are able to get built. So in terms of some of the feedback, and again, this is the quick overview. You'll have the full what we learned report in the January agenda package. So we did send a questionnaire to targeted representatives of the infill building and development industry that have had recent experience navigating this established neighborhood overlay. Some of the questionnaires indicated that the regulations are unclear, repetitive, and impractical. Again, there's that keeping up with real estate market norms piece I mentioned. Some recommended removing the E and O completely, like City Edmonton did in their context. They had something called the mature neighborhood overlay, same kind of thing. And Edmonton got rid of it completely. We're not looking to swing the pendulum that far. Just tweak the existing regulations. Some mentioned a greater need for parity or equality between developing and infill and greenfield development that context to prevent suburban sprawl. To summarize the feedback from the public open house, so as Laurie mentioned, this was a couple of weeks ago at Service Place. There were comments expressing support for increasing housing options and affordability. There were concerns about aplexes, which was Edmonton's approach. Again, I'll reiterate here, we already allow three. We're looking to move the needle to four. And be that as it may, that's not part of the quick win regulatory updates anyway. This is part of that neighborhood intensification strategy that will be coming for September of next year. But obviously, since this has been in the media a little bit, some of the residents we heard from had inquired about that matter. Not part of the quick wins. That's not part of the established neighborhood overlay updates. And then someone also brought up concerns about drainage-related engineering requirements that, that sometimes makes infill unviable. That's, again, not necessarily a, a quick win, but something we do plan to bring up as part of that broader neighborhood intensification strategy at the appropriate time. Moving on to initiative number six in a bit more detail. So we created this graphic that we, we think will be helpful. So parking isn't, it adds to the housing costs. I mentioned previously, some of our developers have expressed that could be in the ballpark of 45,000 plus for underground in that eight to 12 or so for surface parking. So in this diagram, we have two identical apartment buildings and the same number of cars in each graphic. Each, each graphic has 14 vehicles. The example on the left, though, overnight, when most people are home, a third of the parking stalls are underutilized because perhaps the city required too many parking stalls to begin with. The example on the right is what we're hoping to achieve where the parking is better right-sized, as it were, where all 14 vehicles are still there, but there's less surplus. Obviously, that saves costs. I mentioned in the report that research, depending on a multitude of factors, but the, the general number agreed on is that this can shave off the purchase or rental price in that 10 to 20% arena. So the study involved comparing our residential parking supply requirements with those in other cities. Not only that, we actually sent the consultant out on site to actually sample 10 apartment sites across the city, either manually or with technology to count cars, as well as undertaking a literature and technical review. I will go through all of the nuances in detail, but essentially, we're looking to tweak the parking, the minimum parking supply regulations for these listed uses here. Again, a more detailed report will be forthcoming in January. I'll remind city council as well, a lot of work went into right-sizing parking supply via the 2024 land use bylaw update. So that was a good opportunity to tackle the bulk of it. These are just a few remaining pieces of, I'll call it, low-hanging fruit to, again, further move that needle, again, with that objective being to increase housing affordability, housing supply, and housing diversity. I'll also just reference council that these changes are about minimums. So developers know their market better than our sort of blanket land use bylaw, if you will. So if a developer knows that they're targeting, you know, perhaps seniors' residence, family housing, students, trans-oriented, or otherwise, they know their customers' needs better than our land use bylaw. We just want to make sure we get the minimums right. In Edmonton's context, they completely get out of the business of regulating parking supply. So in Edmonton, they pursued what they call their open option parking. Once again, like the mature neighborhood overlay matter, we're not looking to swing the pendulum that far. We're looking to better right-size those minimums, not remove it completely as Edmonton did. But I think it's worth mentioning that, just so you know, this, this isn't the first time something like this has, has been pursued. So to attempt to pull all that together and summarize it, I just have three bullets here. So the city has conditionally been awarded this Housing Accelerator Fund grant from the feds of up to 11.8 million. The agreement with the CMHC involves satisfying key milestones, approving key decisions, and ultimately to enabling 302 additional housing units over the next three years. I'll mention in our meetings with the CMHC, they have indicated they are satisfied with progress to date. And in fact, we've already met our housing target numbers for this calendar year, 2025, although predominantly through single detached dwellings as opposed to the missing middle that is ideally the goal. And then the last summary bullet, on January 27th, a council decision is required on two of those initiatives, again pertaining to the established neighborhood overlay and the minimum parking supply to satisfy the CMHC requirements. And again, those proposal and you spy lot changes will be coordinated with the broader clerical housekeeping amendments. With that, thank you for your attention this morning, council. I'll turn it back to you, Mayor Olivieri, for questions.
You know, how's that?
Well, yeah, we'll start with your list of questions. Thanks very much. That was great presentation, good overview. The, yeah, I guess I'll just go through in order of the initiatives. Initiative three, I know it's not coming before council, that's going to be later in the year, but it's probably the one that's going to be the most controversial in, in the community, right? Talk of fourplexes and all that kind of stuff. I think I heard you say during the presentation that we currently allow four units on some low-density residential sites, do we not?
Correct, Councilor Cortes, and it would depend on the lot dimensions. We allow three on any lot, so you could have a, a single detached dwelling and up to two secondary suites. So one in the basement, one in the, one in the yard. You could do some of those subdivision options if the lot meets the minimum lot width dimension. So that generally tends to be in, in some of the older neighborhoods. But long story short, yes, you can do four already.
They have to be a minimum, I think, of about 10 meters wide per lot to achieve that, get the four.
And, and wider still on a corner lot.
So the goal then of the, the funding through, the funding that we've received is, is to try and make that, expand that so four units are allowed on all of the lots, not just the ones that are certain dimensions.
And define the, the lot, the minimum lot width. So like, if it's already been a subdivided lot, it might not meet the minimum lot width to achieve that four. Something that we want to be looking.
To your point, councillor, actually, I, I would say the city's goal has nothing to do with fourplexes or four, four right away, right? Ultimately, the city goal is leveraging the money that we would not otherwise have, have received, right? Is to bring these, these seven projects across the finish line to improve, you know, both our efficiency or predictability, right, and ultimately form growth. This is a requirement, however, that the federal government came with the money, right? And so it's not a goal in itself from a city perspective, but it is a requirement as part of the broader initiatives.
Yeah, I, I think that makes sense. I think the, there's going to be a concern about these, you know, fourplexes and what they look like, but that's not really what we're talking about here necessarily. It could be four-dwelling units, which could be basements, like it could look like a regular residential neighborhood to achieve that. Sorry, that was my question.
And thinking of some of the emails we've gotten here. Okay, so initiative number four, the public lands, that, that's just, we're just looking at, well, first of all, what is non-market? Can you define non-market housing for me? I think, I know, maybe that's a dumb question, but.
Okay, non-market housing refers to how any housing that is provided at less than market rates. So instead of saying affordable is kind of, it, it's really dependent on what a person's income is. But non-market is if most houses, I'd say, for rental rates, if it was $1,500 a month, it was average market rent, these ones could be 10% less or even more, so they're paying 1350 a month for rent.
So these types of units are provided through some sort of, some providers, some organizations, some market control, like rent control, or not rent control, but or the organization has to provide this housing to make sure that it's in contest, whatever.
Typically, non-market housing requires some form of subsidy. It could be either a land contribution, it could be a grant, you know, from all three, one or all three levels of government, something to reduce those costs, because, I mean, building costs and labor costs are market-driven. There's nothing you can really control in that area. You can't control land costs, you can control parking costs, and you can control operational costs, that sort of, that's kind of, that's why, yeah, it typically revolve, involves some form of subsidy.
This would be things like homeland housing or habitat for humanity, those types of. Okay, and then the initiative, initiative four is just looking at public lands, correct? Just lands that the city, just lands that the city owns, not infill opportunities?
Because what we're looking at is, is trying to expand our housing supply. So some, we have some remnant parcels of land that are just sitting there empty. They're not really, we're investigating whether they could be, you know, the, the potential of it could be maximized and housing developed on them. They're not allocated for another municipal use.
So that's specific to this grant money that we've received. In terms of like broader infill strategies for the city, and we've had obviously issues of, I'm for it, I think, Bray Side, for example, the three lots that are on the north side of, like, that, that kind of thing in terms of our overall infill strategy for a city, that may be separate from this grant.
That would be.
Was that, that's not being contemplated as part of this, is that, I don't even know what that would be. That's in our land use bylaw. That would be separate consideration.
That would be through our neighborhood intensification strategy. City doesn't have any control over privately owned lands, so we can't dictate what they develop unless it's through our regulatory supplements.
Sorry, neighborhood intensification strategy, that's a separate plan, okay.
That's one of the initiatives, isn't it?
Oh, all right, okay, but that's not, oh, I see.
So it's part of it, it's not, yeah, so there's going to be some lands that we know that potentially have, maybe it's a bigger footprint, maybe it's already zoned for an apartment, but it's got an oversupply of parking, so there's an opportunity to maybe add on to an apartment complex or if it wants to redevelop, what it can relook at and be a part of. So we're looking at those, those opportunities as well.
Opportunities for neighborhood intensification, not on public lands, will come forward as part of the other initiative, part of.
Yeah, number three and number one.
Okay, and then with respect to the parking, that's, I know that's going to be coming forward in, in January, the parking, does it apply to the low-density residential as well, or is it, it looked, the chart that you had, looks like it's mainly apartment buildings or multifamily buildings. Is it the parking changes applying to basement suites, garden suites, or lexuses as well?
Counselor Cortes, no, it's, it's just the items that were listed in that table there. So it was apartments and then a few nuanced types of apartments. I think it was called loft unit and residential use above, above, above commercial, but essentially apartments. What we call a townhouse plex, which essentially is a triplex or a quadplex, which are only allowed in the city on corner lots if, if there's a lane looking to reduce the parking requirements there, and then it was affordable housing and supportive living accommodation.
Yeah, I just wasn't, I wasn't familiar with some of the terminology in the town, like apartment dwelling, townhouse, just the technical definition. So those are multifamily developments, not, not, not the low-density residential, okay?
That's correct, and, and councillor, we'll, we'll make sure to include those details and elaborate further in the January submission.
I also noted that that excluded downtown as well. So what, the downtown regulations, the parking regulations for downtown, thinking of some of the potential developments we have coming up, those will remain higher, the higher, at the higher.
They have a different rate as it stands today, which was deemed to be acceptable. So it was apartments that are not located downtown where there is an opportunity. So it was apartments that are not located downtown where there is an opportunity to just shave that back by ten percent. Good, awesome, thanks.
I know councillor Bremanski has a bunch of questions, just, well, I guess you go ahead and try to frame this properly after.
Okay, okay, so the first few questions I have is, you've mentioned you have different consultants working on all these. Is it a different consultant for each step, or do you have one consultant company working on the whole package deal?
So councillor Bremanski, for the, for the e-permitting, that's a different consultant for, for the e-permitting. But for the parking, and yeah, for initiatives one, three and six, which is the transit corridor intensification, the neighborhood intensification, and the parking regulation study, it's all one consultant. With the WSP, they are also the consultant that we had already retained working on our long-range transportation master plan, coined our mobility choices strategy. So it's the same consultant for efficiencies.
Okay, and you lumped in six with, you know, the first few stages rather than kind of working your way through just for that reason, because you're intensifying bigger buildings along corridors, is that why, or?
It's, it's more, I would submit, and my colleagues can jump in. I would submit, councillor, we have to achieve these three hundred and two parking units within that three-year period. These ones that are coming before you in January are an opportunity to.
Housing, you mean, not park.
Housing, my, my.
We can do three hundred and two tomorrow.
So to to satisfy those commitments of achieving three hundred and two housing units over the next three years, these were a couple coming in January that are sort of low-hanging fruit, so we can, we can get these going, so to speak, to start producing our housing unit numbers. In the future, the neighborhood intensification strategy, the transit corridor intensification strategy, or any others, they very well bring additional requirements that propose moving the needle further on any one of these topics. But at this point, these are some of the quick wins that we feel are merited. They've been observed locally, that there's best practice precedent. Colleagues, do you want to jump in on?
Councillor Bremanski, for the half program, we were required to identify seven initiatives, a minimum of seven housing initiatives to, for the fresh, so these were the seven initiatives we chose. They were based on best practices identified through CMHC.
Understood that, I just thought there was a progression through them is what you're.
So each one is individual and each timeline is individual, but they're all, many of them are occurring concurrently because we have to, because there are tight timelines.
And then it's mentioned eight hundred meters to St. Albert Trail for focusing on transit corridor. St. Albert Trail, eight hundred meters from St. Albert Trail along the whole length of St. Albert Trail is a big variance. So where are we talking about? And then the other thing you threw into that is offering financial incentives for development along the trail. Who's providing those financial incentives?
So I'll tackle the first question first, so that the eight hundred meters, councillor, is already depicted within the approved municipal development plan. You'll see in map, I think it's map three of the future land use concept. There is a red conceptual corridor of approximately eight hundred meters, which is walking distance to transit along the trail. So the what has already been approved, we're just looking into the how. You're absolutely right about the different geography. There are some parts of St. Albert Trail where there's a berm and a fence and houses on the other side. That's not the target of this necessarily, it's, it's the, primarily the, I would submit, the commercial retail corridor and approximately eight hundred meters around that, specifically around future rapid transit stations. So.
When we were looking at the application for the half grant, that was actually a requirement was the blanket eight hundred meters. So through this project, we're going to more accurately reflect what works for St. Albert and what doesn't, and CMHC expects that out.
Okay, and the financial incentives part?
Councillor Bremanski, we've engaged consultant and they're looking at our servicing and infrastructure requirements and where we have capacity, where we don't. And some of their work will inform potential incentives that we could use that will foster development. So the funding for that, we have five point nine million through half, if we get the future funding advances, and some of that money will be used for incentives. So it won't be coming from the city's coffers, it will come from the half coffers.
It'll come from the grant.
What's that number, sorry, Laurie required?
Well, for the transit corridor intensifications, five point nine million. But we also have funding for the neighborhood intensification as well. And then overall, we have eleven point eight million dollars. So some of that money was used for consultants' costs, but others can be used for incentives.
Okay, and then it was mentioned respecting the character of the neighborhood, how do you clarify that?
Councillor Bremanski, I would submit, again, back in two thousand and six, when the established neighborhood overlay was introduced, its intention was really to ensure compatibility, to to prevent, I'll say monster homes for lack of a better word, and those types of considerations. And it had those really detailed, really difficult to calculate context-specific regulations whereby if you want to expand or redevelop or add a second story or demolish and build something different, your opportunities are dependent upon the height and the footprint of your neighbor. What we're looking to do to ensure the compatibility is ensure we're not changing the uses again. We're not changing permitted uses or discretionary uses, we're just making them easier to get permits for, to actually do the full two-story or the extension, while still being compatible in terms of, for example, streetscapes, setbacks on the front yard, not looking at this time to change anything to do with mature trees, delivery trees, for example.
And on the corner lots, traditionally you'd have less parking, you know, near the corner, right, on both angles kind of thing. So where do you decrease the parking in that area when you're building bigger on a corner but decreasing parking?
We're not planning on decreasing parking for single-family lots.
Okay. And city surplus land, like, how much, you know, I don't think there's all that much city surplus land. So what are we talking about?
We're talking about remnant parcels such as road allowances that were never developed. We purchased some land down for a road, Leclerc Way, there's a couple of remnant parcels there, we're investigating. You know, we're looking at other areas that we we have had land that we could just, you know, add some more units.
Far Hall One's an example, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, and then also mentioning, like, you know, a big thing for council right now, of course, is finding servicing for all the developers that need servicing. And there's a huge focus on servicing now. So if you're wanting to intensify neighborhoods, then we're bombarding servicing, are we not? Because you would need more servicing in those neighborhoods if you're adding a bunch more people or a bunch more complexes.
So I'll start trying to answer this question and then I'll pass it on to my colleagues as well to like, talk about it specifically with half, but what this grant provides us the opportunity to do is to work on some of the goals that the municipal development plan did talk about. And one of them was about having an intensification target. This project enables us to actually study our infrastructure in our infill communities, which we know is coming to its end of life. Servicing usually those pipe slots somewhere in the order of about fifty to seventy-five years. Some of these neighborhoods have been built since about nineteen fifty. So what we're able to do through this grant is really study that existing infrastructure and to understand what our needs will be as we grow forward and as we evolve as a city over the next twenty-five years. What's nice about it too is that because we are working fully hand-in-hand, but it's not, it's not separate either. But we have a full understanding of what servicing needs we have in the Northeast. Talked about it today. We know what's going on in the West. Having the info will also provide us with a good opportunity to understand, are there some connections? Is there some efficiency if we work on this together? So as an overall city strategic plan and the infrastructure plan, I think that this grant comes at a great time. I'm going to pass it on to the rest of the team, Scott specifically about the half and the infrastructure.
Yeah, what what the half program does is, we're going to be an infill, is we're making use of existing infrastructure. So we already have roads and sidewalks and schools and recreation facilities within our central core. Instead of just focusing development outside of, into greenfield where you have to build new roads, new servers, new schools and recreation centers, we're just, we're sort of improving the physical responsibility of the city by enabling some infill development.
Thanks, Laurie. Not much to add, I'll state again at the start of my segment of the presentation. I mentioned that old adage about the whole being greater than the sum of its parts. And I, I think with that respect, to answer your utility question, you know, that that servicing analysis is underway right now as part of the neighborhood and transit corridor intensification strategy. So that will address some of those technical questions. I would also submit, council, this is all about enabling incremental change over time. So if we go to four units per lot, for example, not everyone is going to do that tomorrow, right? This is going to be something incrementally over time, over a generation or multiple generations. So we're just enabling that to happen, we're currently, maybe it's a little more challenging. This is, again, all about facilitating housing supply, housing affordability, housing diversity in the areas where we have municipal jurisdiction. Ms. Scott previously mentioned things we can't control, like labor costs, building materials, exchange rates, tariffs, but we can control land use regulations. And this is why we're looking to just tweak some of these, again, to move the needle on that affordability, supply and housing diversity front.
And I think this is my last question. You know, you showed the diagram of, you know, the three houses stacked up or the four side by side or pushed back, and it could be this or it could be that. Well, there's many things that are more offensive to people, you know, in those choices than certain other ones, right? So how do you, how do you control actually which of those choices are being built at the, you know, permitting stage or whatever? And also, could you just reiterate the eleven meter, because eleven meter is three stories? So you were saying it's outside those lines, but not in certain neighborhoods, can you just clarify that as well?
I'll take a stab at it, so you, you have the eleven-meter maximum height. That is allowed currently anywhere in the low-density residential district, so newer areas, older areas. Eleven is a existing development regulation, and I would submit it's consistent, more or less, within all of the metro Edmonton municipalities. As for the housing, like the built form of those four units, stay tuned for that one in the new year, because the the options are being looked at. And again, the CMHC just needs us to move from three to four. What those four look like will bring for those recommendations when we know ourselves. And it might not be necessarily a one-size-fits-all. It might be four units in the form of, say, the subdivision and a basement suite anywhere in the city. But for the quadplex type scenario you mentioned, maybe there are some lot minimums or other prerequisites, so to speak, to pursue those, right? So the four units per lot, it could include one of those examples, it could include all of them, it could include some of them, it could include some of them. If we're working through that, we'll, we'll, we look forward to sharing more in the new year.
I did have one more, sorry, a vendor purchase for the electronic permitting. Has that been investigated at all yet, or are we talking for IT kind of thing?
Councillor Bremanski, we're actually, that is already being worked on, and the program will have us off launch in December for six types of permits, I believe. Yeah. And so, yeah, and then we'll be expanding and developing, incorporating it into more permit processes as we move forward.
That's where the vendor purchase came in?
Yes, the vendor purchase was actually, we were able to utilize an existing contract with our asset management software, so we were able to piggyback on that project and add this as an additional project to to expand that scope. It saved a significant amount of time, which was, meant that we were actually able to achieve the target as we had identified within the half, within the half grant to CMHC. It is a vendor that we've used for geographic information system software as well, so they're well-known. And yeah, they've achieved, we've achieved that milestone, or will achieve this milestone this month. But there are, we're going to get six permits on. There's apparent, there's approximately, I don't know, a hundred permits that we need to keep moving through and bring on as well.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. The restrictions that you indicated on, you know, renovations and that kind of thing, are those neighbor-driven? So they're given, they're given notice that a neighbor is attempting to do a renovation, and the restrictions are neighbor-driven, because it's.
No, so the restrictions contained within the land use by law regulations themselves. So, and I'm going to just do an, for example, and it might not be a hundred percent accurate. Our development officers are the ones that, that know this like the back of their hand. If someone had a thousand-square-foot bungalow and they wanted to add an addition of five hundred square feet to bring it to fifteen hundred square feet on a, you know, a standard fifty-foot by one, by a hundred-foot lot, that's a big lot, with a small house on it. That could actually, the land use by law and the mature neighborhood overlay could actually say, no, you can't do a five hundred-square-foot addition because it's too big compared to the two houses that are next to it. Might not even be about height, it might just be about size. But there's more than enough lot coverage still available as per the standard regulations. The height still meets it as per the standard regulations, but this extra layer of regulation is stopping it. So it does mean that like a thousand, they might only be able to add, say, three hundred square feet. Well, if you're a growing family and it's twenty twenty-five, you don't live the same as you did back in nineteen sixty-two. So you may want to have. It's maybe sweater, I'm.
You were saying by a house you were talking about.
You know, you want, you want, you know, the primary suite with a bathroom, you may want to have, you know, four bedrooms, not, you might want an office. These are the things that have changed over the past, you know, fifty, sixty years that the house has been built. So, and that mature neighborhood overlay is stopping it, not necessarily the neighbors themselves. It's that regulation that we're looking at.
Okay, because it was confusing when you made reference to the next-door neighbor when they go.
It's, it's a very confusing regulation, and it's even confusing for us as the planning department. So as a layperson, you're coming in thinking that you can just come in and do a renovation and do an extension. And all of a sudden, you're told, actually, no, you need to scale that back by a hundred and fifty square feet because it's not me. Or you have to come to council to ask for an exemption from the land use by law.
Okay, that makes more sense. And your chart that you have in our package with the parking and the proposed regulation changes, you indicate the dwelling apartment is, you're proposing a point-nine parking spaces per dwelling unit, but you don't reference visitor parking, but in the affordable, non-market housing, you indicate one visitor parking space per hundred dwelling units, and you say the parking requirements for the residents are going to remain unchanged, but you don't identify that. So could you give us some parameters there?
Absolutely, councillor Park, the visitor parking is not changing for apartments. We're just attempting to keep the, the table simple. There are some nuances with visitors and employees in some settings. We just highlighted what's changing. If it's not mentioned in that table, it remains as is. So for apartments, it's just going from, instead of one unit per, thank you, Laurie, instead of going from one space per unit, it'll go to point-nine spaces per unit. The visitors remains as is, I believe it's one. The visitors remains as is. I believe it's one, one visitor space per seven units. That that remains as is. We just didn't uh wanna clutter up the table with too much information.
And the affordable non-market mark market housing, what are their parking requirements for residents currently that are remaining unchanged?
Um, for affordable, non-market, so the so the visitors are changing from one visitor stall per seven minutes to one visitor per ten. The existing requirements, I don't have those on me today, but I I can, I can state that they are remaining as is. So there would be requirements for um the residents themselves. Um, and in the supportive living context, there is the residents themselves as well as support staff. It's typically the folks that would be in those supportive living arrangements that they don't tend to drive as much. Hence, our recommendation to reduce that component only from one space per unit to one space per three units. But they're still gonna have their support staff um and and visitor stalls, which will remain unchanged. We're just looking to tweak things where we believe there's merit. And again, we can bring those full details to to the January report for you.
Yes, please, um, because that would be a concern if if the affordable non-market are staying at one per unit. And all of a sudden, we're decreasing the dwelling, the apartment dwellings to less than that.
Thank you for that comment. I'll, we'll make sure we uh assess that in the the January report.
Thank you.
Councillor Hughes.
So the three hundred and two units that we're trying to achieve, how do we know that we're achieving them from these measures?
Uh, we have to report and identify them. Um, we have housing targets for missing middle housing. Um, so the units we have to achieve are focused on missing middle and affordable housing um typologies.
What did we put for? She said we met them for this year. So.
Our 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 housing targets were four hundred seventeen units annually. Um, this year, so far, we've achieved more than uh that that number of units. But again, we're we're not really focusing, our our goals right now haven't really focused on the missing middle. So that will be our.
So it suggests at this stage, we haven't met the goals that we stated for the missing middle. They're more in our traditional, but we have hit these targets. So we are measuring them. As to knowing specifically is, is this, was this gonna happen with or without the funding? I can't, we we don't have a way to quantify that, and CMHC is not asking for that. But they are asking for a breakdown of how many um townhouses have we brought on this year? How many um units are within those, within the um eight hundred meters? Those types of things, those are the things that we report on.
Because when you say we're gonna do it by three hundred and two, like we have very, you say this is forty five more units, et cetera. Like, I just don't know how we are able to state that with confidence that that's what this will create.
Uh, these are projections moving forward. We we did our best, our best educated guess on doing something like this and our our best work to move it forward. Um, we're not, we're not fortune tellers. And we're the same as every other community who is who's done the same thing.
I guess I'm just like, so we reduce the parking, that somehow will have more houses. I'm just trying to put those two together.
They don't. Parking, uh, if if you notice, uh, we had the slide, parking actually is not going to achieve more unit units on its own. It will just assist with the other, achieving more units through the other initiatives.
And it helps with the affordability, because again, this is, this is about supply affordability. Like, some of these things are gonna bring on more supply, but maybe not help affordability. Um, bringing on, you know, everyone talks about infill. Well, that's more expensive. Well, that's not necessarily bringing on affordable housing, but it's bringing on increased supply in housing and just different housing typology.
How do we make a developer, like you say, we reduce the housing cost, we reduce the parking cost. So now it's plus the developer twenty thousand dollars less, you're saying, for the parking. How do we have that developer actually pass that on to anybody? How do we not just like pocket it?
I don't, it's a great point, councillor, a- and I don't think you can control that. I I I guess it comes down, again, it comes down to that um old adage about the whole being greater than the sum of its parts. And if a developer can put their housing product on the market um more affordably. But the theory is they're gonna be able to compete with other developers and other municipalities around the region, even if it's only a hair below other municipalities. It's still more housing supply at a slightly reduced cost, because they wanna, they they don't wanna hold on to their lots. They don't wanna finance indefinitely. They wanna um get their approvals, build, sell and and walk away. If they can sell for slightly less, because the regulations were more favorable. Um, that's in their best interest, and some of those savings, but not all, uh, to to your point, will trickle down to the end user, the the tenant, uh, the owner. Um, but indeed, developer profits are part of that equation as well.
I could also just add a little bit about flexibility as well. So what we're talking about here is the minimums. Again, each home builder and each developer knows their market. So if they're looking at trying to do a high-end condo complex, they're probably not gonna want to build with the minimum parking stalls. Cause they know that their um end user is probably gonna have two cars. And they're gonna wanna covered space for the two cars for their two-bedroom apartment. Um, what you're looking at is, um, if you've got some, when you're starting to look at the different types of units. If you've got a bachelor unit versus a two-bedroom unit, you're gonna wanna provide different levels of parking for that. And this reduction enables them to uh really work and address their market. Um, and again, we've focused a little bit on, very few changes have happened. Like, it's it's minor tweaks, really, what we're looking at, or what we enable right now. But where we are looking at some of them is for that non-market housing, because we do know that there is less likelihood of a person that's struggling to afford rent um also being driving a car. It's just, that's just an extra cost and an extra barrier to bringing on that non-market housing supply. Or even just reduce rents, even if it's, that's the, you know, you've got a a builder who wants to be benevolent. Um, they will, you know, have that opportunity to do so with the smaller, some of their smaller apartments.
It is important to note that, you know, we do not regulate nor control the market, to your point, councillor, right? And so, um, you know, this is designed to to make things, streamline things, right? To uh to ideally remove some barriers and be more efficient as it relates to um the elements that the team's talked about. But none of this will impact or or or, you know, uh, control the market. The market will be what it is, and then folks will navigate that as they see fit, right, in terms of development.
I love the cost of what you had, like for the first one transit. So you said that was a half of the CMHC. Um, but like, these are some pretty high numbers. I also looked at the survey, for number two, the survey with the, you did second initiative. I don't remember any, but I'm sure you do. We're doing, we did an open house, we did a survey, and we're doing a report, and it's costing us two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I'm just trying to figure out, I'll tell you, I'll do it fifty thousand less, right? Councillor, it's expensive, so I just understand that how this.
Councillor Madski, some of those budgets are for. Sorry, councillor Hughes. Um, some of the the numbers also include a budget for housing incentives moving forward. So, um, say, if we want to include include more missing middle housing and we can reincorporate a secondary suite grant program. Some of that budget could be used as as a grant for developers or or residents to build a secondary suite in our home. So the budget numbers are, this is overall, we receive eleven point eight million dollars from that. See, it's responsible for spending the funding to initiate more housing. So that is our our effort. We are not spending all the money on a consultant cost. We will be spending money on other initiatives and infrastructure costs and uh other um ways to incent housing.
We just haven't gotten to that stage yet within the project. It's taken, I I will say, there's been a tremendous effort on the planning and development branch to get these programs and up and running. Um, and not just on us, but also procurement, um, and all of our supportive uh departments across the organization. So this is the first, this is the first iteration of what you're getting, but this is a three-year project. And this is where um a lot of our planning and development staff are working on this right now. Um, this is eating up a lot of their internal capacity.
And it's probably, I would be remiss, I think, if I didn't uh, um, you know, highlight that, you know, the the list of seven projects was sort of already on the the to-do list, right? Um, what this money has done is had us brought them forward and reprioritized to get them. So we wouldn't be having some of these conversations if we hadn't received the money, can't from the feds, uh, right? Because we wouldn't have had the resources to do it. And so we've prioritized a bunch of effort internally um to to work with the milestones and and take advantage of an opportunity, I would submit, to your financial opportunity provided by the housing.
I guess that, so when we approved this last year, um, to move forward, we recognized that we had to make changes, including this, the four flexes. Um, in the land use by law. And I I know that some, myself, are hesitant about the implications of this. But we were also told, well, let's move forward, because you're gonna get some money. And then the decision to move forward in the land use bylaws come in twenty twenty six, as you're saying. Um, so if some of this money is currently gonna be used for incentives, if we were not to make those changes to the land use by law. Like, I don't know how.
And then the project would have to just end.
Sure. But how close are we to making it end anyway, if a lot of that money's being used for incentives?
Uh, we all, we get, we have received one and one advance so far, which is approximately two point nine million. We'll report again in December, and that that reporting informs the second annual advance. And then there's a third event, and then the last advance is at the end of December twenty twenty eight.
So we'll receive approximately half of, well, we'll receive half of the grants in January. Um, so right now, we've got about six million dollars. Um, we have not spent six million dollars, I would suggest at this stage. Um, we're spending approximately, and I'm just, they know down to the dollars and cents. But, you know, one point five million is going to be spent on the um e-permitting program. We know that that's just a complete write-off. We've got uh probably in the order of I don't know, seven hundred thousand dollars for consulting services. Um, so right now, that's kind of covering the first set of costs. We do have, we've also um got some staffing costs that we're covering through this as well. Um, so at this stage, we haven't spent more than what we allocated out. So the incentives will probably start working on, I would suggest, the end of next year, when we know if we're going to be moving forward with these land use by law changes.
It is an important point, right, council? I mean, this is your decision space at the end of the day. And if there's a requirement or an element brought forward that you collectively do not approve, then we will go back and rework it, right? And and we won't be going full steam ahead, uh, if you say no at the end of the day.
What we're trying not to do is presuppose your decision and spend your money in advance of that decision.
I'm hearing you correctly. So by January, before we make the decision, we'll have six million dollars. Let's say that in January, council does not approve every single thing they request. Need to give back any of that money?
That would be up to the CMHC.
We do actually have money in the pot that we could return back to them if they did say we want some money back, right?
But we haven't spent next year. It's like, if we if we get the funding in January, not sure exactly when it's coming forward. But if we get the funding in January, we have not pre-spent that three million dollars that we would get in January.
So I mean, that's, if they said we want the money back, we could just give them the money back.
Less what we spent to date, which we've spent in accordance with the plan. So I don't think.
Okay, so just so that I don't, I don't wanna have everybody feel we have pressure that's, just so we understand the complete context and situation. Um, so the other thing I'm trying to figure out, I get one, one of my issues is parking. I'm looking forward to seeing that come in January. Um, so we're saying that if we, the cost of it were eight thousand to twenty thousand, forty-five for underground. But it could be a twenty, up to a twenty percent reduction in costs. So I'm trying to figure out how.
Okay, so how we were figuring that out was, uh, say, an average two-bedroom multifamily unit was three hundred thousand dollars. Um, so if you save one stall per dwelling unit, you're saving between forty-five to sixty thousand dollars. And then if there is one service stall for dwelling unit for visitor parking, you're saving a a small portion, another fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars on that from the parking amendments. So basically, you are saving approximately between forty-six thousand to sixty-two thousand dollars per unit, which is the uh an average of fifteen to twenty percent of the part of the overall unit cost.
Developer's saving that. He may or may not pass on, but the developer. Okay, so the other thing, I guess, when you went to looking at the parking issues, et cetera, when you went forward, I realize this is coming up, but it's on topic, so it's over now. So when we're looking at the parking issues, and we're saying we should reduce them, did we actually like go back and say that we have way too many stalls? On all these locations that we are doing justify the numbers?
So, uh, through the chair to councillor Hughes, um, w- we did. And so we sent our consultant out. Um, first of all, they looked at, they did a jurisdictional scan to see, okay, how do our regulations compare with comparable municipalities? And for the most part, they found we're already in the ballpark, um, uh, even slightly lower in some circumstances. But where there were opportunities to move the needle, uh, the ones that were up on that table, uh, were the ones that were identified. Now, seeing that apartments are where the the biggest bang for your buck is, and where the the biggest impact um on potential neighborhoods could be. Our consultant actually went on site to say, okay, if we were to reduce the regulations in a manner consistent with uh what's being done in other jurisdictions, what would it look like? And trying to remember the numbers off the top of my head, I believe the um, in the report, there was the average and the mean occupancy broken down. And it was something like point eight eight parking stalls per, and here's, here's the numbers right here. Thank you, Laurie. Um, here we go. The observed residential parking rate ranged from point six six a- at at the low end to one point zero two at the higher end, parking stalls per dwelling unit. So point six six per unit to one point zero two per unit. Again, right now, the minimum is one per unit. The average, though, was point eight five, and the median quite quite similar, point eight seven. So that was the evidence in our view that supported reducing that minimum. Instead of one per unit, bring it down ten percent to point nine spaces per unit. And once again, councillor Hughes, I would reiterate again, uh, these are minimums. So in Edmonton, they said, in Edmonton, we're not even gonna require minimums. Here, we're saying, let's just make sure the minimums are right. And then the developer, um, who knows their target customer best, they can have the final sign, the final number. We just wanna make sure the minimums are right sized. And and in talking to smaller developers in particular, parking can be the i- i- it can make or break the viability of a project. So it's not all about housing affordability. Um, a- as uh Mr. Fletcher mentioned, we can't control what the market will do. But we can control elements of affordability, elements of supply, elements of diversity. And and there's, again, it's that whole being greater than the sum of its parts kind of dance uh going on. And if we can right-size the parking minimums, maybe a small developer comes in and they they want to do a a lower-rise apartment with uh ten units or or something like that. Currently, if our land use bylaw said, okay, you get ten units, we need ten parking stalls. Maybe their plot of land um could only accommodate um nine parking stalls or or eight parking stalls. Under the current regulations, they wouldn't be able to do their development. So either nothing would happen, they would just walk away, go find a piece of land um elsewhere in the city or in another city. Or they would have to scale down their proposal to eight units, so that they could fit um the parking regulations that we require. So.
But by doing that, their costs are higher for the same number, like their costs, their input costs are still the same, right? So that means that that would be passed on to the consumer. We're making a lot of assumptions that all the costs are being passed on to the consumer. We recognize that, but that's generally what does happen.
Yeah, so if we have a cor- a a four flex and it was a corner unit, and you said that we're not changing the parking requirements. But then if they considered to be a townhouse, then you can reduce the parking requirements in half. So I guess, I'm just, again, I'm just trying to, what's to stop me from building a four flex and following a townhouse? And then you produce your parking requirements from two stalls to one.
You have a definition of of house class and. You have a definition of, of house class and, uh, like, there are land specific built form definitions in the land use by law, and so the regulations comply with the, the specific development forms.
So there is a difference between the fourplex or the small, I'll call it a small lot townhouse versus a complex townhouse. Then there's different parking regulations for both, and there's different definitions.
I just, I didn't, I didn't realize I'm parking on a park parking right now. But when I look at like what other municipalities who have put the fourplex in, they have had unintended consequences to quote Ken, that have been almost like impossible to reverse. Serious drainage problems, um, nowhere to actually put the snow at the, during the winter.
Garbage.
Lanes, garbage unaccessibility, inaccessibility for emergency vehicles, like it just continues to go on. Um, and so when I look at this and just like the idea of like the people aren't driving cars, I think is ludicrous. And I realize that people with low income don't have that choice, but I also know that their first opportunity, they can get a car dramatically improves their quality of life moving forward. So to discourage people from even having that ability to have it, or to discourage people from having other people pick them up because they also can't park there, like the minute you have a car, you now can choose where you work. You no longer are tied to bus lines. You are no longer tied to two hours trying to get from one place to another. It dramatically changes your opportunities. So as we continue to push this down, all I see is we're decreasing the quality of life for both the people who are trying to live there and then the opportunities moving forward. So I just, I realize this is coming forward, but it's really, it's challenging for me, um, to go into through that. So there was one other question I had here, and I'm just forgetting if I had it from, I already had a answer. Oh, the fourplexes too. Wouldn't you duplexes with two basements also count as a fourplex now? So don't we already have that allowing that if we did that?
We allow it in certain conditions. So what we're looking at is expanding those conditions, um, to your point. Whole point of the next eight months is for us to really look in and dig into those challenges that we could see with going to the four, right, is what we call it, but it's not fully as a right. There will be parameters and requirements that would be necessary to enable that level of development. We want to make sure we get that right. We've seen other jurisdictions. The beauty of our half funding is it came a year after some other municipalities have gotten their half funding. So we've been watching kind of what are the challenges that other municipalities are facing? And so we are keeping an eye on that and having those conversations with our consultants about. And in that design, the incorporation, how it impacts the community, where it might be more appropriate in some instances versus others. And what we're already enabling in our greenfield versus our mature neighborhoods, because that's also something that we're looking at, um, because there is, we enable some of this type of product already in our greenfield. So how do we enable it across the city?
The other thing I, I just don't know if we're actually, when we're planning all this, if we're actually buying for seniors, because our, everyone's getting older, like our populations are just simply aging way more than have kids. And seniors, the one thing that they hate are stairs. That's like how to die. Get, give me it, and everything seems to be tall and up. And yet I don't feel like any of this is actually recognizing our age demographics. Um, and I'm not saying something, I'm saying from the feds and what they're, everyone's pushing is to continue to have people on the stairs. And that's the one thing, as people get older, that's the one thing you're looking for is actually would like to have zero steps, like walk in with zero steps is their goal, let alone a full two story. So I, I mean, are, are we actually considering any of this when we move these things forward?
Also Hughes, uh, one, one of the options that Craig presented were forced, like, uh, stacked housing, that, that can enable seniors because they would only have their housing on one level. There could be an elevator for each floor.
And the challenge on that, and I, I don't have a solution, I'm just, and I don't, we don't have to answer type of thing. But if you put an elevator in a fourplex, those costs that I think you're saving, they're gone. And just maintaining that puppy is going to be crazy expensive. So you can't put an elevator in a fourplex and think that it's going to work. And still, it's just a board by department. They're really expensive elevator, like, so I'm just, and fellas, you may not have it, I'm just putting that forward as a thought as we move this forward, because we're really not considering our markets, which is like, I know those families are there and everything else, those are art being considered, seniors not. And that's all I have to add, thank you.
One of the things that we are trying to look at through the mature neighborhoods is to really look at, and it's not specific within this, it's within the goals of the MDP, is to look at, um, aging in place or aging in your neighborhood. Um, so while yeah, redevelopment and lot splitting generally means that you're going up, not out. One of the things, you know, again, this mature neighborhood overlay, if you want to do the addition so that you can enable maybe a carer to live in the home with the senior who's in a bungalow, that's causing some challenges for us. Um, again, having more apartment style options within each of the different mature neighborhoods is also a way, yes, they may have to leave their family home, but there is an option within their community that they might be able to utilize. Um, yeah, a, apartment, uh, elevators in a four story, uh, small apartment neighborhood is expensive. Some people within St. Albert have the means to do that. We also are seeing within, um, Riverside, we're seeing, and some of the other new neighborhoods, the smaller lots are doing a bungalow level product with, and you could incorporate a basement suite. So there are some options, they just may not look like traditional options. And what we're doing is trying to enable all of these different types of forms, not just for seniors, but for people with different abilities as well. So that's, that's, it's not a stated and implied goal necessarily, but it is things that we're all considering as we are looking through that MDP lens, not just through the housing accelerator.
It's just there's consequences to do, and it's not just for us, but the, these have done, I think that many are looking at that. The other question is, because we have no control over the development, like you said, the builder development is market driven. So all we can control is land, s- servicing costs. So I'm, I'm just.
And the regulations, I'm not struggling in the fact you said it, I'm not challenging you on the fact you said it, I'm struggling on the reality of it. That we're like, the houses cost eight hundred thousand, but six hundred thousand is market driven, like I'm trying to just come together with like, and meanwhile, we're just compromising the, the lot sizes over and over and over again. Um, while the building costs are market driven.
Also Hughes, that's why some of the focuses on, on the housing accelerator fund is for non-market housing initiatives, so through not for profits, because of the fact that they're mission driven, not market driven. So that's why we're trying to engage with not for profits and looking at options that we can, um, develop through them that will provide the housing in perpetuity for, uh, people who require affordable housing.
The challenges with the, um, non-market housing and the timelines we've had is that sometimes they don't fully align. As you know, with twenty two St. Thomas, we've been working on that file for about four years at this point. And we still haven't got the units on, or we know they're coming, but this is us prepping to enable, what this project enables is that preparation so that we can move a little bit faster should another, uh, grant become available, we're able to apply and keep things moving along.
Thank you, Mary. I'll stop talking.
Um, good. Trying to figure out where to start here and remove the subjectivity of it, um, because I think there's a lot of speculation here of terms of what this we're talking about and I think when you talk about, like, the comment was, was made, present day norms of the development industry. I think we've also been able to identify some of the maybe to use councillor Kai's term, unintended consequences of that is like, there's some real challenges that come out of that. And when you say we're going to move from, it's incremental to move from three to four, that can be significant if you put yourself in a home with, say, the average homeless four people and you, your neighbor redevelops to a fourplex or a four units to twelve, now I have twelve people living next door to me. Could be significant. And when we're chasing CMHC requirements, which are ever changing, which we've seen, can be ever changing based on federal funding and interest rates. We're changing the landscape of what St. Albert might look like. And I think there's some mature neighborhoods when we're looking at densification that would be challenging us when it comes to what are we trying to achieve here? And I heard it through the campaign that the landscape of St. Albert and the fabric of St. Albert is extremely important and why people are moving here. And so to start changing that, and if I lived in Brayside or the Gardens or Woodlands and there's a fourplex or we're looking at four units and you want to go four stories up, would be really frustrating, I think. And I, and I, and I think we're going to be the ones collectively that are going to have to answer that. So sure, it doesn't sound like much going from three to four, and there's not opportunity everywhere to do that. I get that. However, in the opportunities that there are, could create some negative feedback towards what does St. Albert look and feel like? And then if you take the parking requirements out of that or minimize it, because we saw what Edmonton did and they took them right away. And you could put nine units on a corner lot with minimum parking requirements. And you put them in narrow streets and then they don't have parking requirements, but they park on the street. And it can create some other significant risks and challenges. So I don't know what we're chasing here. I, I get the net benefit to adding units. I do from a tax perspective, without a question. It's what are we looking to achieve out of this long term? Because we've seen other municipalities do this and have to revisit it later, trying to fix some of the decisions they made. So I, I struggle with that a little bit because I put myself in that position of living in a mature neighborhood and my neighbor putting up something and we can talk in hypotheticals, if we can put an elevator in or we can pass it on to the, the savings that, that like, respectfully, I don't, I don't think the developer's looking at, how can I pass on the savings to the consumer? I think it's how do we maximize profitability? I don't know if this is the direction we want to aggressively go down. And then you look at garden suites as an option. You need alleys and I don't know what the total units in St. Albert would be accessible for if everybody redeveloped it is five thousand units or whatever it was, but there's not every lot in St. Albert, because we're limited to alleys, alleyways, right? So you're looking at four, you're looking at duplexes with basement suites, or you're looking at building up. And I think we would, we would have some feedback that might not be from a city perspective. Revenue wise would be great. From a community focus, might have some challenges coming back. So I struggle with that a little bit, uh. Yeah.
Can I just jump in, Mayor? I just respectfully put back an issue. We're not chasing anything. Um, this was an opportunity, right? That came with some money. And so the opportunity certainly is, has some, uh, uh, some guide rails behind it. And so we're not trying to over engineer anything. We're working through it. At the end of the day, council is responsible for the public good and you'll make the decisions you wish to make. I, I just respectfully say uh, that this is an administration trying to chase thing or social engineering, anything. I just want to put that on.
Can I, can I jump on that too? Can I jump on that in support of administration, Mayor? I mean, this, this is an initiative that came to us in the last term and the last council, and I realized this is a new council. Um, but we, we have an oppo, we had an opportunity, we saw to, uh, talk about that missing middle. And we saw an opportunity that, uh, half funding gave our community. Nobody has, has been said previously, nobody's made any commitments. We're just looking at what this could do and how this feels and looks in our, in our community. So we're not, we're not, to pick up on that point, we're not chasing anything. We're, we're looking at um, developers have choices. New residents have choices. And, um, if it's seen out there that we are creating barriers to development when we don't even know what that is, um, I think, I think we're missing an opportunity. So um, all that we were looking at is, is what are, what are, what's out there, what's available? How can we tweak our, our, uh, current land use by law that actually may actually benefit our existing residents, but also our developers? I've been to other communities, I've seen it work. I know it works. I can look at our developers that are in the room and I know they have product that it works. Um, so, um, yeah, we're all afraid of what happened in Edmonton, and I don't think we're talking Edmonton. All we're talking about is looking at opportunities here. And when it comes back to council, then we can have a full and frank discussion. I think um, that's all we're doing. So I mean, I, yes, buyer, but beware, but, uh, I just want to make sure you guys know where it came from.
So, okay, then I'll retract the, say, the comment of chasing, um, because that's uh, that's inaccurate. Yes, the new residents have a choice. Current residents don't. And when and I think we have to focus on what the current residents are looking at. And if you walk through the mature neighborhoods and say, are you okay with this? I would, I, I, again, I'm not going to use speculation, so I would just say I would like to know what that feedback would look like objectively. Also, if you give a developer the opportunity to say you can build three or four, I would also like to understand which one they would pick. I, I, I could give my opinion and, and I won't, but I, I would think we need to at least consider that. And we've seen it work, yes, absolutely. But we've seen it not work. And that's the consideration we have to take is the other side of it. And that, that's, I guess, the position I'm taking. And if you, I, I think you compound it with reducing parking requirements. Because then when you don't have to build, when you reduce the requirement for, for building on parking requirements and then you add vehicles, it compounds it. So I'll, I'll leave it at that. I know there's other questions at the table, but, uh, yeah, thanks for the consideration.
And I will just comment further on that. Um, as someone who has been impacted by change, um, I find it, I would like to be able to proceed so that we can be respectful of new people that are moving into our community, that they know what's going to be in their backyard. But more importantly, that we're respectful of the people who have chosen to be in St. Albert, who have ultimately invested their life savings in a home that um, we're now asking them to have significant impacts or potentially significant impacts to their lifestyle. Just as an offside, uh, reducing parking in an infill building um, doesn't reduce the requirement for people to have a place to put their vehicle. It offloads it onto current residents when we're actually doing that in a, uh, in a existing neighborhood. So that will be my caution in moving forward in knowing that if you've got a choice to move to St. Albert and you know what's going to be in your backyard, that's, that would be my goal to always be able to know what's ultimately going to impact your lifestyle.
Yeah, Matt, just maybe during a lot of similar conversations, one of the things that this project does have, and this is why we're not bringing it forward right now. Um, we are having a decent amount of engagement that we've got planned specifically on that four per per lot. Um, but we're also having some why are we doing this? Kind of why, why would we not, why are we doing this? Why are we considering doing this? Um, discussions as well. Because what we are talking about are neighborhoods where this is, the impact will be primarily at this stage are the mature neighborhoods. And they're the neighborhoods that are in this. They have, they're starting to hit it in St. Albert. They're not, it's not quite like Edmonton because we're a newer community than Edmonton. But there's a point where neighborhoods revitalize and change. And so this is us trying to make sure that we've got those community values ingrained within the regulations themselves. You know, we know trees, it's a nonstarter. So like, how do we enable parking and have, like, that's, this is the big conversation. How do we enable the right amount of parking with the lot split while still maintaining the boulevard and not impacting? How do we enable the right amount of parking with the lot split while still maintaining the boulevard and not impacting the trees? That's a big conversation and that's the stuff that we're working on right now within the regulations. So all these points are very we understand them, we respect them and that's some of the big discussions that we're having as a, as a group as we go forward. It's not, we don't want to, um, make light of those, those comments because you're talking about a community that exists. So that's, that's part of our process, yes.
I have a question.
Well, no, I just don't know, kind of, I don't know what the expectation is. Uh, less formal than council meeting, but like we're not really debating anything. Okay, this is, uh,
Just feeding, feeding.
Just questions or comments or all of the above?
We're, we're, yeah, we're not really, we don't really have a process right now. The, the question, can I question? Um, the, the, the question I have, just based on all the discussion and all that, I mean, you've got we initiated, we have seven initiatives. Right? And some of them are ongoing, some of them, like we said, fed into ongoing projects that we were looking at anyways. And that we had an opportunity and we saw half funding as being that opportunity. And so we've taken advantage of it. So like E permitting, which is a benefit to not only us, but to the developers and, and everybody else. We're trying to streamline, trying to make it go. What I'm wondering and what I'm potentially worried about, it falls on earlier questions is, is, um, some of this money, if we have to return it to the government, God awful, would that be feel terrible if we had to return money to the federal government? But, um, are we at risk if, if we don't? So the CMHC has approved our three hundred and two, right? Is that correct? Is that a fair statement? So they said we had three hundred and two. They don't really care how we get to three hundred two, but three hundred and two, or do they, they care about the four, the adding the extra?
So based on the funding formula, for middle, you, you get a base price, a base, um, cost of twenty thousand dollars per unit. You've got C mill, it's another twelve thousand dollars. If you get, it is affordable, you get an additional nineteen thousand dollars per unit. So that's how the funding formula worked out.
Fair enough. But I'm just saying, so if are all of these things tied together, synced together so that if we don't do one, we lose the funding and then we lose everything else, the other initiatives?
I almost would don't want to ask our, our legal counsel here on that, but that's part of the legal agreements. Specifically, I think the intent is to see systemic change within Canadian communities. And if there's been, uh, I would suggest if there has been, uh, valid attempt to achieve things based upon projects and you're short by ten units or twenty units. That's, I would suggest they're not going to say you need to return two million dollars. So I think like every year that we get the funding, they, them asking to return the funding. I don't think is, is probably practically probably what's going to happen. They may say you haven't achieved this core goal and we're not going to give you any more funding. That may happen. But I, uh, uh, based upon our conversations with the administration and CMHC, that seems to be the intent that we thought. So it's, it's
Is that a question to legal?
I know, I think it's also fair to say that, um, CMHC would adjudicate that if and when it came across the desk right at the end.
Yeah, so we know that situation, they would make the targets move. Targets are moving, but what I'm saying is, so the initiative number one, that's where the biggest pot of money seems to be five point nine million around PODs. So I, I, are we at? If, if we say, um, no to two and no to parking, but can we achieve number one?
Maybe.
Bundle or is it?
Maybe.
Yeah, like is it, yeah. So you see what I'm, what I'm saying because I mean, if we achieve number one, if we, if we put whole bunch of, uh, development in that corridor as anticipated around transit oriented kind of developments. Don't we, do we, do we not achieve or accomplish the target?
But I'm not sure CMHC, again, uh, you know, I, I know, know where you're going on this, right? But, um, it depends, that's right on, on the, the details of it, of that discussion, which I think is to the point why the team has been very, very careful to ensure that they're metering, um, the spending, right? Commencing with the deliverables, the progress on the roads and ensuring that the city's not going to be on the hook. We have to, uh, there's a potential future where we have to give some money back. I don't know.
And we're also
Figure it out.
Also trying not to bring forward things that we don't feel that the city can't achieve.
I would say probably the previous city council endorsed this course of action under the premise that we're serious about making some of the
Read influencer process, right?
They're just sidebar conversations. So I just want to make sure, yeah, the previous council did, but with the caveat that it would come back.
Yeah, it guarantees that.
Yeah, I mean, but I'm just saying is, is we take advantage of some of the things. So we've accomplished, we can do four, we can do, we already did five, we can do seven. Um, you know, and we can, we can have the discussions as it relates. We can move towards one. I mean, so we're moving and we're, we're accomplishing our kind of movement. We just may not eventually know what that looks like yet.
Okay, Councilor McKay, we what we have to do, the, the problem with the infrastructure, like the, the, the long-term intensification strategy is it's long-term. So we probably aren't going to achieve a lot of units in, within the three-year term, whereas small neighborhood intensification and, and different housing options throughout the city gives us a better opportunity. Um, the other, I guess, component that council might want to be aware of is that other infrastructure, federal infrastructure funding is also based on intensification requirements. So, you know, if you don't
No, and I mean, I, I just don't want to give my, I don't want to give anything back.
I, I, I was just going to say, um,
Process line.
Yeah. Uh, I understand that there's dollars available. And first of all, I very much appreciate it. Guys probably feel like you're just getting thrown to the wolves here. This is not the place for that. The we, I think fundamentally, we have to decide what direction we want St. Al, St. Albert to go when it comes to this. The funding's available because there's a shortage in residential housing of all types, right? Uh, call it missing the middle from one end to the other. We just have to decide what, how that fits, I think, in St. Albert and where, just because there's dollars available, doesn't mean we have to go after it if that doesn't fit what St. Albert's direction needs to go in. That's my challenge is how does it fit? And do we want to redevelop what St. Albert looks like? And sure, the mature neighborhoods over the lifespan of, they are going to need redevelopment. It's what does that look like? And, um, just being cognizant of that, certainly appreciate that the extensive effort because I know when it comes to the requirements to meet the funding is extensive, uh, and detailed. So, uh, not to challenge where there's any impetus on what the direction we're going.
When we applied for the grant funding, we didn't say things like we would achieve six units as of right. We knew that that wasn't something that we could achieve for St. Albert at this time. So we really did write the grant and I'll look to Ms. Scott, like we, we sat down and really talked about what are the things that we can achieve out of that housing. There were twenty options that we could achieve, look at. And we felt that based upon what we're seeing, the trends, also knowing what's going on within the region and some of the things that other municipalities are doing that we thought we could achieve these. Um, or that we would be pushed in that direction within the next five years anyways. So this is where it's kind of like, yeah, did look ahead a little bit, but also recognize what our community is. Um, what the value, what their community values are. Cause we've just done the municipal development. Um, we know where they're looking at it. Um, we've heard quite a lot about people wanting more housing choice within St. Albert and we're hoping that this, we can do that respectfully.
For process, Mayor, I look at, this is going to come back to council in, in January. There's going to be a public hearing. I think, I don't, I think we should just just move it forward. Yep. I mean, it's information.
Yep, I appreciate it. I agree. Uh, thank you all very much. Yeah, I think we could.
I recommend, we actually have lunch here. If you want to take a break, Mayor, um, lunch is for the key folks upfront. So if you're not enjoying that, um, do not take, um, and then we'll, uh,
Well, how long? You want to tap in?
Top an hour.
A quarter after twelve?
Yeah.
That's great.
Okay.
Okay, we will reconvene. And move to four point two with regards to the update on the Lakeview Business District. And leave it to Mr. Erickson to start from.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Marisol. Got a sort of both cross-functional team here between economic development that they'll do their introductions and engineering. And the intent here, Lakeview Business District, there'll be really two components to this. One will be sort of an update on kind of a little bit from where we came from and where we are now. And then there will be an in-camera portion so that we can discuss the current state of our economic attraction status, and I'll just leave it at that. And so, you know, if you've got questions related to specifics in terms of those pieces, I would just ask on those as a placeholder where we'll do the transition, I believe, Pargas' team has the motion ready to go. And so, as a reminder, certainly last council, this was their number one priority. I haven't heard anything to change that to date from this particular council. And so, it's a very important muscle movement, not only for the short and medium terms, but ultimately for the long term, as we look at St. Albert's financial sustainability over the long haul. So I will stop there and turn it over to the experts on the other side of the team.
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher. Good afternoon, members of the city as a whole. For record, my name is Mike Erickson. I'm the Director of the City's Economic Development Department. My co-presenters for this item this afternoon here, maybe I'll just go in order. Patricia Nichol, Manager Investment Attraction and Growth, Donnie George, Director Engineering, and Jordan Bederidge, Manager Asset Management Land Integrated Infrastructure Services.
Seriously, your title? No wonder you don't have business card.
I'll also just highlight Andrew Blackburn is our Lakeview Investment Attraction Officer who's joining us here from the gallery this afternoon. We're here to provide an update, as Mr. Fletcher mentioned, on Lakeview Business District. Though you may be inclined, I would ask that you hold your thunderous applause to the end of the presentation this afternoon. Sorry for that. So I want to begin, or we'll begin our presentation today with the foundational question of why Lakeview. Why has the city undertaken all this work over the past decade and a half? Well, historically, St. Albert has been challenged for higher residential property taxes. As a means to address this, the city's municipal development plan sets a goal of increasing the city's non-residential assessment to achieve an assessment split of thirty percent non-residential and seventy percent residential. Lakeview offers a strategic opportunity to grow the non-residential assessment base. For many years, St. Albert has experienced economic leakage, as many residents must travel outside of the community to find employment. Lakeview offers an opportunity to increase local employment opportunities by establishing more space for employers to locate or start and grow. And finally, for many years, St. Albert's been constrained by a shortage of industrial land. In recent years, St. Albert has benefited from a surge in industrial growth, adding approximately one-third of our entire industrial inventory in the last six years. Now, this is a very, these next couple of slides are very full, but I'll just note that this does mirror what was in the agenda report in terms of some of the background and history of the investments made into Lakeview. So originally known as the employment lands, work to bring Lakeview from vision to reality has been underway for roughly fifteen years. In that time, the city's undertaken several plans, studies, and strategic investments. Although in particular on this slide, that in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, the city made a series of investments to enable growth in West St. Albert, which include and benefit Lakeview Business District. This included bringing sanitary sewer and water across Ray Given Drive, as well as upgrades Tarantula two sixty and the twinning of Ray Given Drive. The Ray Given Drive twinning project has benefited from a fifty-fifty cost-sharing agreement with the Government of Alberta for this approximately seventy million dollar project. These combined investments, oops. In twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five, council approved the West Area Structure Plan for all of West St. Albert, which includes Lakeview. And they approved the series of investments to advance the development readiness of Lakeview and accelerate future private developments and investments in this district. I'll highlight the Lakeview Servicing Project Charter, which is intended to help advance development in this area by front-ending services through the district and the Development Acceleration Program, which is an eight-million-dollar fund established to catalyze conceptual non-residential development in Lakeview. These combined investments total over a hundred and ninety million dollars, with the city contributing over seventy million, and the remainder being funded through grants, provincial funding, and off-site leases. Again, a fairly intricate slide here, but this is mainly to help demonstrate and help visualize the location of these infrastructure investments noted on previous slides, which benefit growth in West St. Albert, again, which includes Lakeview Business District. So things like bringing Sanitarion Storm across Ray Given Drive, as well as the transportation investments, which I noted earlier, and in the future, the spine road through Lakeview. All of this is just to show that, I mean, there's really a lot of linear infrastructure, several kilometers of linear structure that will, that has been improved or will be improved in the future years as part of investments in this area. The importance and prioritization, pardon me, of Lakeview Business District has been integrated and aligned through the city's municipal development plan, council's strategic plan, and through the investment attraction strategy. This direction has helped guide marketing efforts as well. At this time, I'll invite my colleague, Ms. Nichol, to speak to the Lakeview marketing plan.
Erickson, I just want to say it was very nice to meet all of you, and it's a pleasure to present to you today. I'm going to do a number of slides here on the investment attraction strategy and for Lakeview and our marketing. So Lakeview represents three pillars, the marketing of it. So pillar one is about the awareness side of it. Creation and launch of marketing assets, awareness campaigns, and prospecting, of course. Pillar two is about establishing tools and programs to help us accelerate the development. And pillar three is about ensuring the city's processes are streamlined, as well as aligned with us advancing development sooner. This chart represents numerous tactics that we've already planned and implemented this year. In Q1, we developed the Lakeview branding and launched the Lakeview website. Q2 was the inaugural groundbreaking ceremony. And Q3 through the end of this year, we had the most activity kicking off our awareness campaigns and the creation and pre-promotion of our Development Accelerator program. The groundbreaking ceremony was a pivotal point for Lakeview, celebrating years of time and effort that many have put into getting us to where we are today. We had amazing turnout from government officials to developers to brokers, businesses, and landowners. Days following that event, we saw an immediate uptick of inquiries and interest, and that was just a jumping off point for us on the awareness side. So pillar one is the marketing strategy, and as you can see, very active with all the colorful pictures. For general awareness, we have large signage that we placed at the north and south end of the district, which provided immediate public exposure. The signs were also coordinated with Royal Park Realty signage, just to give us more bang for our buck and more visibility. Royal Park represents a large portion of the privately owned land. They were a broker. We have, we had great media exposure as well with articles in the Gazette throughout the year. We were featured in Edify Magazine, which also sparked a number of inquiries. We've also been present at many industry events, which gave us the opportunity to get in front of developers and brokers and, of course, businesses and have those face-to-face connections. Additional marketing and pre-promotion of our accelerator program and general awareness through a dedicated LinkedIn profile was launched. And of course, additional events such as Build, NAOP, BOMA, and the Chamber of Commerce, marketing messages in those events as well. The next phase of our marketing will kick off in January with the launch of our accelerator program. And we'll continue with the ads in LinkedIn with target-specific industries and very focused geographic areas that we're targeting. And then also in January, you'll see a feature on Lakeview in the Invest Alberta magazine, so it'll be a nice double-page spread, editorial style. We also continue to enhance our website, adding more frequently asked questions and expand the developer toolkit, and that'll provide them with greater access to information. Pillar two is all about accelerating land development through the DAP program. We have a lot of acronyms, so DAP, Development Accelerator Program. This reimbursement program was created to stimulate early-stage industrial and commercial development, offering financial incentives to companies undertaking the initial risks associated with being first-in developers. The DAP is a ten-year program with an eight-million-dollar fund that is available for qualified applicants. There's a minimum threshold of thirty acres required to be eligible and a cap of a hundred and twenty-five acres. And this is to ensure that the land is developed and built on, and ultimately, we want to attract businesses that will attract the jobs that we need for this area. As mentioned, we've already started a soft launch of the program and have had many discussions with developers and brokers who have provided very, very positive feedback on this program. They're very surprised at the uniqueness of it, and they're excited to see how this all transpires. The official launch will be January first of next year, and the application process will be funneled through our Lakeview website. So pillar three is about priority-enhanced development support. So this goal is, this pillar is to create expedited service model internally aimed at supporting and, of course, accelerating development. This is considered one of our competitive advantages in the region, having a streamlined development process and a really good interdepartmental cooperation that aligns with each other and an understanding that Lakeview is a priority. An example of this is the implementation of an initial stage discovery meeting that we are implementing as part of this process. And this would provide contact, the first point of contact with the developer and the city, and they can provide their high-level plan, their development plan. And this meeting will help mitigate any red flags or concerns or suggestions that may come up during the future development permitting processes that will happen thereafter. So the city initiated NP, or Neighborhood Plan, with pillar three goals in mind. Administration has put forward part of the budget request, the implementation or the leading of a neighborhood plan for the entirety of Lakeview Business District. The Neighborhood Plan process can add up to twelve months to a development project right now. And by having a completed neighborhood plan prior to anyone coming online, it would streamline the entire process and reduce developer costs. As a result, making it more feasible and, of course, more attractive, ultimately accelerating development. By leading the Neighborhood Plan, the city can reduce barriers that enable developers to begin construction sooner. A coordinated approach will also improve alignment of land uses and planning among all landowners within the district. It will strengthen the city's ability to accurately plan and size transportation networks, municipal services across the entire area, resulting in a more consistent planning and overall cost efficiencies for the city. The anticipated cost to complete the Neighborhood Plan is approximately three hundred thousand dollars, and this would be funded by the twenty twenty-six reserves as part of the budget process you just went through. Administration has applied for a provincial grant as well, that if successful, and we'll know in the new year, it would reduce the overall cost to half of that, so a hundred and fifty thousand. This process will allow the city to bring investment-ready land to market sooner and provide developers with greater certainty regarding land uses. Collectively, these benefits will enhance the district's viability and appeal, supporting a stronger, more balanced economic future for the city of St. Albert. And now I will turn it over to our engineering folks.
Well, thank you, Ms. Nichol. Good afternoon, members of the committee. Between Donnie and Jordan, we'll cover the servicing aspect of the Lakeview. So we'll start with the next slide, Mike. So as you've seen in the slide, this is an overview of the Lakeview Business District, and the colored in lilac has been approved as part of this and Albert West infrastructure plan in September twenty twenty-four. The district is an area of approximately six hundred and seventeen acres of gross developable land that has been designated for industrial employment land use, of which approximately hundred and seventy-three acres of city-owned land, as shown in the blue, of which approximately hundred acres are net developable land for accounting for municipal reserve and infrastructure. Again, as shown on the map, Lakeview Business District is a development area that offers connectivity to the CN Rail in the north and efficient connectivity through Ray Given Drive, either Highway two to the north or Hand Day to the south. The area is currently accessible through rural and non-urbanized roadway, as you're more familiar with, and the land is not directly connected to municipal utility servicing such as water, sand, And the land is not directly connected to municipal utility servicing such as water, sanitary or storm. Through the initial investment, as depicted earlier in the slides, Mike has shown some slides of that number of projects that we have done, such as Project 8 and Community Amenities Project. And with the completion of the targeted new infrastructure, which is now known as the Lakeview Servicing that council has approved, services the broader area of the Business District, the land will be enabled for expedited development. Current municipal utility servicing access just north of this district and is the shortest direct link under services. The servicing area requires consideration of connectivity and investment of infrastructure such as lift station for sanitary and road network. From 2023 to 2024, just to give you a background, city formed a cross-functional team from experts from all departments that spanned through a three-day intensive workshop to come to the opening Lakeview scenario. So multiple servicing scenarios were reviewed through cost of investment, risk, development readiness and return on investment. Ultimately, at the end of those sessions, the recommended scenario of opening Lakeview was chosen. And the objective was to provide the critical infrastructure such as spine road access on and the utility servicing to the cusp of the development area, balancing a mix of return on investment and overall project cost, which landed us with the approval of 62.7 million, as spoken earlier, in Lakeview Servicing Project Charter on October 15th last year, which was followed by a borrowing bylaw approval earlier this year in January. Of the project total cost, it was estimated that 76% will be offset leviable and the remainder will be non-offset leviable. The servicing design is currently underway and I will now pass on to Jordan to take us through the servicing details, scope, schedule, risk, the whole package.
Thanks, Donnie. Yeah, so the first slide here is just around the project scope itself. So the overall project scope of the project includes both design through to construction. The project will start with detailed design of the realigned Range Row 260 that will provide the access through the core of Meadowview as well as Meadowview Drive, which will connect to Ray Given Drive. Underground utility design will be incorporated. Will incorporate the essential services such as water, sanitary and storm servicing, which will provide the full suite of services to the cusp of the property lines for new development to tie into. Preliminary design efforts will be completed for both Town Road 540 and Meadowview Drive between the new Range Row 260 to Care Creek, as well as the planned access road to the city-owned lands. To enable the project to move forward into construction, additional tasks will be required, such as land acquisition, external regulatory approvals and others. So there are 14 separate parcels that will have to be negotiated for land acquisition. And there's CN Rail, Alberta Environment and Protected Areas and various pipelines and franchise utilities that would require formal approvals. The project is split into off-site leviable infrastructure and non-offsite leviable. So the off-site leviable infrastructure includes roads, including the associated stormwater facilities and the sanitary lift station and forest mains. Off-site leviable costs will be reimbursed to the city as development builds out through the annual levy recoveries process. The non-offsite leviable scope includes water mains and any storm infrastructure specific towards development. Majority of costs associated with this non-levy infrastructure are expected to be recovered through future servicing agreements with the owners of the benefiting lands. So as other than the city-owned lands. Exact benefiting lands and allocations will not be determined until detailed engineering design is completed. And then the timing of this cost recovery is also unknown at this time. So once the detailed design, land acquisition and regulatory approvals are completed, the project would proceed into construction. Construction will include the scope shown on the slide. Oh, can you go back? There we go. It will show the scope shown on the slide, which is comprised of the infrastructure needed to provide the essential services through the spine of Lakeview. There is a sanitary trunk interceptor that currently runs along the CN rail tracks on the north. Lands adjacent to the CN tracks, mostly the portion north of the tracks, will be easiest to develop first as they will be able to tie in by gravity to this sanitary trunk line. The southern parts of Lakeview are required to drain towards a proposed sanitary lift station, which will then pump those flows back north to the trunk interceptor. So it's anticipated that this sanitary lift station would be part of a priority two construction scope, while we foresee the more development-ready lands in the north to be developed first. However, we do remain flexible with our construction priorities as we continue to work through the design. Construction is expected to be prioritized to accommodate any planned and committed initial development of the year. So the project is currently on track, following the project schedule that was provided with the original project charter and is outlined here. So the project started with preliminary design, preliminary roadway design as part of an earlier project charter and just 082. That work is now completed and has transitioned over to the Lakeview project team. The Lakeview team is currently working through the completion of the engineering design for all the remaining servicing. This design will then be used to support land acquisition requirements and any regulatory applications. We have had kickoff meetings with some of the landowners already and still plan to meet with all of the affected landowners to initiate conversations. Tender and construction is planned to start after design work, land acquisition and the regulatory approvals are obtained. This is anticipated that by Q4 of 2026, we would be ready to begin with the procurement of a contractor. We'd say most of the heavy dirt moving would likely start in the spring of 2027, once the snow is gone. The project team is working with economic development to keep a finger on the pulse of the development opportunities, which would help guide the priority areas to start construction. So for a project of this scale and scope, and obviously the uniqueness of it, it does come with a variety of risks. Our project team is cataloging those risks in a risk register and then determining appropriate risk mitigation strategies for each of those. We've included some of the high-level risks that could impact scope, schedule or budget for your awareness on the slide. So I'll just quickly run through them. So any project with land acquisition is always going to carry some unknowns. Landowners can be opposed to the project or they could have strong feelings towards their own properties that might be difficult to overcome. So this could impact our ability to reach mutual agreements to attain the land for the project. So we are mitigating this by ensuring we include landowners early in the process, only once we have at least a decent level of competence in our land requirements. And then we would work through a very structured approach throughout our entire process. Regulatory approvals and external agreements would be required for this project. So again, as I mentioned earlier, this includes CN Rail, various different pipelines, Alberta Environment and Transmission Power Lines. So these organizations have their own internal timeframes when it comes to the reviews and approval processes. We have been reaching out to them early, starting proactive engagement. And we will be getting lists of their requirements so that when we do submit applications, there would be no surprises on their end. Another risk we identified was cost escalation, and this is just because the project is spanning multiple years. We're mitigating the risks of this, we're mitigating this risk through a dedicated effort to keep costs low as we advance through this project, while also achieving the project outcomes of salt. So we're spending time during the design stage to ensure that we have an efficient infrastructure solution. And at each stage gate through the process, we'll be preparing an updated cost estimate to ensure that we are still within the allocated budgets and expectations. So lastly, through this project, we are going to be the first ones in setting up the area for future development. We're working in tandem with economic development to ensure the servicing plan is reasonable for the intended uses of the area. We're maintaining flexibility as we work through the design to help accommodate any initial committed developments. However, as we do get further detailed, as we get further through the detailed design process, we are going to have less flexibility. So that early engagement is important. So aligning our project in tandem with the Neighborhood Plan process that's proposed, it does help us ensure that we right-size our infrastructure and we provide efficient servicing to all the reaches of Lakeview. So I just want, I just want to end on a positive note. So risks are a normal aspect of any project. We have a very talented and dedicated team working on this and we are monitoring and mitigating and updating our risk register as we go along with all the latest information. So the next steps, so yeah, this is just a brief closing on the next steps. So as we look into 2026, we have three core initiatives that will help turn Lakeview from a concept to a reality. Advancing the servicing project is the first, is the foremost initiative. So we are anticipating design to be completed in 2026 with construction to follow shortly thereafter. And this goes really closely with the next initiative, which is the proposed Lakeview Neighborhood Plan. By aligning our servicing designs for Lakeview together with the Neighborhood Plan level, we are marching forward with more certainty while also removing a hurdle as part of the development application process. Lastly, we are continuing the investment attraction and marketing efforts. We're working towards advancing active development opportunities, attracting new interest to Lakeview and continuing to promote and support Lakeview. So that ends our formal presentation and we can open up for some questions.
Want to start the applause?
I'm, I'm, I need a phone camera to get up with their updates, but till then I'll have anything at this moment.
Excuse me, I have questions. I just don't know. I don't think they're in camera questions. If they are, somebody will stop me and. Very, yeah, perfect. I don't think, I don't, I know I don't understand well enough the off-site levies, what is the 76% non-offsite levy portion and the 24% onsite levy? What determines what's onsite levy portion, what's not? I know you started to explain it there, but I didn't follow.
I would say off-site levies is a whole conversation on its own.
Yeah.
Every year annually, and you'll be going through this in March, we update our off-site levy bylaw. And as part of that, we work in collaboration with developers going through the updates of this. But an off-site levy project is basically an infrastructure project that supports a greater area. Rather than having the developer have to front-end it and pay for everything itself, once it's in the off-site levy model, the city is the steward of that. We collect levies individually from all the developers that would be benefiting from it. So basically, in the nutshell, it's just a project that benefits a lot of different landowners. So we can rightfully collect them, all the funds necessary to pay for it.
I got that. Why is 24% of it not off, like what, what? Isn't it all to benefit the area? Why would some of it not be off-site leviable?
There is some infrastructure that we do consider more site-specific for a smaller development. So that includes water. So for water, the only leviable infrastructure we really consider are reservoirs and perhaps supply lines or large transmission lines. So in this area, it's more of a distribution kind of level. So we didn't include water as an off-site levy project here. So the city would be front-ending it as part of this, but we do have the opportunity to collect the funds from still some of the benefiting developers through our development agreements. So that's another avenue. If it's not an off-site levy project, developers still have opportunity through a development agreement process with the city to get those funds back. It's just not as formal as part of an off-site levy. It is very confusing.
Yeah, yeah. Maybe that's a conversation for another day, but.
Fair to say, there will be more coming on this.
Okay.
You know, if there's only, we actually can't, from a legislative perspective, include anything we want in off-site levies, right? It's actually quite defined.
Yeah, sure. I'm just curious.
And cannot use. And so we can, yeah, update on the specifics related to this, but you know, the city is also off-site levy, right? And so our city lands is an example. It's not that the city doesn't contribute. We're part of parcel of that.
Right. So if that was a part of the 24% or like even, you know, when you're talking about water not being part of, or parts of the water delivery not being part of the off-site levy. Say, I just don't understand why it would, but yeah.
And in four years, respectfully, you still may not understand why.
No, no.
Deliberately, but it's very complex. It's well taken. There's work we have to do with you on that.
You add something, I don't know if it's going to confuse you, but a closer analogy that I can see. What you can see is road network, right?
Yeah, for sure.
On the underground. So the closest analogy is in the offset levy, we include arterial roads, but not the local roads. So think it that way. So arterial road benefit of bigger, larger development area rather than the local.
Sure. And so in this, in this example then, or in that analogy, we're doing some of the local roads as well as part of this thing and some of that that is not.
Okay. For example, we are bringing in the water line through that Range Row 260 spine way that benefits only those developments on both sides.
I see.
Including city land.
Right, so that wouldn't be.
Some elements of it is not offset levy.
Okay.
Because it doesn't benefit the broader, because our offset levy for water is one basin. Like if you put a project into that basin, every developer in the city will pay to it.
Right.
Similar to transportation. That's not fair, right? Because this is only benefiting the closest landowners.
That helps. Thank you. The only other question I had, and maybe I'm just getting hung up on the wording semantics, there is a neighborhood plan currently. Neighborhood Plan C, right? If I'm looking on the website and the boundaries of Neighborhood Plan C include include all of Lakeview. So is this, is is this a neighborhood plan? We're doing another neighborhood plan within Neighborhood Plan C? Is that?
I can speak to that. I can speak to that. So you're right, there is an existing neighborhood plan that we did for just the city-owned land. So if there was a map here that, yeah, there we go. So that was, that was done because we own it, we know what we want it to be, we have a vision, so we move forward with that. As the process continued, developers and interested investors were, were, you know, calling us, recognizing what the timelines were going to be, the added costs, we're trying to be more competitive. So we put it forward to administration, to senior leadership, that I think it's beneficial that we actually show that we know what we want the entire district to be and that we provide a plan. Now, now the planning is not set in stone because a developer could come in and modify it, right? Or amend it. So we will, we're going to have a little bit of cost savings actually, because we've already done the Neighborhood Plan for the city-owned lands. And so then the new planning for the whole entire Lakeview will just basically incorporate that and we will have one plan at the end of the day.
So in in Neighborhood Plan C that I'm looking at right now, like there's a part, there's a part, for example, this is not necessarily related to Lakeview, but there's in between Leclerc Way and Ray Given Drive, for example, there's that section of land that is currently shown as part of Neighborhood Plan C. That I'm assuming is not going to be part of this new neighborhood plan. So that'll come forward as a separate neighborhood plan at some point.
I may actually just first. Can I refer to you on that?
Yeah, I'm just looking, I'm trying to figure out the neighborhood plan. So the neighborhood plan that's currently been done already for the lands that the city owns, if I'm looking at the map, it shows that Neighborhood Plan C also includes like all the way down to Leclerc Way and Ray Given Drive. That's what it shows in Neighborhood Plan C. Or is Neighborhood Plan C just the city-owned land? So.
Okay. And so part, I see what you're looking at, right? In terms of the maps. And so what has been done is just the city piece. The rest of it, the work that was described earlier in terms of the budget approval for the rest of the Neighborhood Plan development will encompass most of that area, probably not in the south.
Yeah, just the Meadowview Drive to Chero kind of area. Okay.
Okay, thanks. Let's. Um, thank you for the presentation. Is there just a couple of quick questions? In terms of the Development Accelerator Program, are we, how did you get to the minimum 30 acres and maximum 25?
So part of that is, and Ms. George alluded to this, was a lot of modeling that we did beforehand, right? Whether it was through the servicing or whether it was the acceleration program, trying to sort of estimate based on, you know, our best information available, what we would expect those development timelines to sort of look like. And what we sort of felt was enough of a threshold that we would sort of see cementum generated from that development. And then sorry, the, because you talked about the cap as well.
Yeah.
In terms of acreage or the total number?
25.
25.
25.
Yeah, I think, I think once we sort of did a bunch of different scenarios, it would be, we would, we would run out of funds essentially. Wouldn't be able to, for one applicant to develop 125 acres in that period and receive sort of the eight million dollar maximum rebate. So that was kind of the top end. Just there would be no more money left.
And is the accelerator program then like regionally competitive? Is it expansive to Canadian, but nationally competitive? Like where, what are we looking at generating? Because it's a 600 acres. And I guess it leads to more important question is if you had an anchor tenant that wanted to come in with all of it, how do you position yourself? Like where's the incentive for somebody to come in if they're capped at 125 acres? When you've got 600 or, you know, and you could really diversify your risk or reduce your risk with an anchor tenant coming in, looking at all of it. So like, does it de-incentivize the anchor tenant when you're at 125 as a maximum? Like are we limiting ourselves from somebody coming and saying, I want to do the whole, I want it all?
Yeah, I, I think I understand the question. I might separate it into two pieces because you asked, is it, is it regionally or nationally competitive? Um, when we, when we designed the program, it was intended to, to sort of look at our regional competition and, and where we fare and how we wanted to position ourselves. So I'd say that was, that was the focus, recognizing that a lot of difference between the Edmonton metro region and city Calgary metro region or Vancouver, Toronto, et cetera. Um, so I think as we were developing the, the program, we were trying to find this balance between providing enough incentive that we felt um, helped um, address some of the financial uh, challenges that we might see with some of our competitors. But still recognize that there were a lot of um, indirect benefits or non-financial benefits to, to stay out, but I'm trying to place a, a value on that. Um, and then again, we're, we're limited in terms of how much, you know, get, we can take on and funds we can put into the program. So we sort of ended up with, with that number. Um, but I'll maybe add that, you know, during the discussion, we brought this forward. There was talk of, you know, what if the, we, the funds completely depleted and we've got a hundred acres built out in Lakeview, would we consider coming back with another version or a second round? Uh, and the answer at that time was, yeah. I mean, if the program was wildly successful, we'd come back to council and, and sort of propose another uh, variation of it.
Could I just add to that? Um, further to Mr. Erickson's uh, comments. Um, nothing is stopping somebody from coming in and, I mean, it would be the most absolute win of the decade if somebody said, I want all six hundred acres. Um, we, they could definitely do that. They would only qualify for the development accelerator program for the hundred and twenty-five acre portion. Um, on top of that, we, we have done a lot of research and a lot of conversations with developers regionally and, and um, sort of provincial, regionally and nationally on uh, how much, how many acres they would actually build out every year. Um, you know, knowing that it's going to be light to medium industrial, notwithstanding the uh, the commercial side of it at all. Um, and fifteen to twenty acres per year was that cap. Um, anything more than that, they can't, you know, building out and all that kind of stuff. They just can't do that. So the second part of that was the hundred and twenty-five acres. We don't want some coming in and buying a lot of like, let's say four or five hundred acres and sitting on it. We would love to have multiple. I mean, I'm sure if there was one, that would be great as well, but we would love to have multiple different uh, developers coming in who would simultaneously build and then construct or develop and then construct the buildings, bring businesses and employment.
Isn't there a time limit on that too? Like there's an eighteen month turnaround that they have to go. So if you took six hundred acres, that would be a pretty quick turnaround.
Yeah, eighteen. I think if you had six hundred, we, we'd be amenable to like build a.
Yeah, you have. Yeah, you got to commence construction within eighteen months.
But I think we wouldn't jam a square peg into a round hole, right? And so, you know, this was designed uh, with some very good analysis, right? And a vision. If somebody came in and said, we want the whole thing, here's our awesome plan, uh, to develop it and in a timely fashion, right? I think we would take that into account and then look at the, the program, look at what we were doing in light of that.
Any other? Thank you very much. That's.
We're going to go on camera now or no?
Yeah, there's an option to go on camera, a bit of any camera presentation as well.
You're going to get awayed.
Somebody care to put forward something?
I'll do it. I keep asking about in camera, so I might as well do it. If we go on camera, she has to do a matter of sections twenty-nine, one A, twenty-nine, one C and thirty-one C of access information.
All in favor? Pass unanimously.
Respectively have to ask a non-city staff to depart? Or just for the same camera portion?
I think he'll be like half an hour or, I know it depends on our questions, but.
Well, it's not alignment.
We will move to four point three, which is our debt strategy update and turn it over to.
Thank you. And so we've got the finance team here. And so, um, you know, if you recall during your orientation, we talked about uh, municipal debt in broad terms, right? Municipal budgeting in broad terms. And so this is sort of the next step, I guess, in the level of fidelity on the route. Ultimately, used to your discussion on your uh strategic plan in February, right? And looking at the the ten year capital plan. So, um, it's been a lot of work happening uh for the last little while, uh under finance team, uh, the guidance of the CFO, uh, I think to be more deliberate in terms of mapping out our uh, potential debt uh and making sure that, because it's one thing to take it, it's another thing to afford to pay it off, right? A little bit like a credit card. And so taking a look at, demand versus supply, and then what that could look like to help inform your decision making, because at the end of the day, ultimately council needs to own it and see where it goes. So, this will be the introduction to sort of our debt strategy, our debt management more holistically. Uh, you know, again, as a precursor, I think to start and discuss specifics, right? Uh, which will get into sort of over the next month or so, really culminating in your interest planning discussion. Uh, in the call in early February, excuse me. Uh, and I think the other thing is, you know, if I sort of typified the challenge that's ahead of council. Uh, you're not really picking between wants and needs, you're picking between needs and relative terms, right? And so this is very important to understand what the art of the possible is, I think, from a financial perspective. Do you want to offer anything, Diane, before we turn it over to the folks who actually came to listen to?
Yeah, I think we'll just turn it over them right now and we'll weigh in as we go.
Thanks, Mr. Fletcher. And I'm going to introduce to the committee Stanley Chan, our manager of financial operations and reporting. And he's going to introduce, provide the committee with an overview of the city's debt, current debt capacity position, and the impact of the ten year growth capital plan on our debt capacity. So I'll hand it over to Stan.
So thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Stanley Chen. I am the man manager of financial operations and reporting, and I'm here to present the debt strategy update. So for this presentation, we will start with a brief understanding of debt financing. Next, we will talk about the city's debt limits, how they are calculated, and other limits within the current debt policy that the city adheres to, which are the internal debt limit and the debt service limit. We will provide two scenarios. The first scenario is our debt outstanding on our council approved debt funded projects with respect to our current debt limits and our debt capacity available. The second is our debt outstanding on council approved debt funded projects and incorporating the debt projects in the ten year plan and its impact on debt capacity. Finally, we will talk about why prioritization and why it matters and the next steps. So, debt management is a strategic tool that empowers the city to invest in large scale infrastructure projects that benefit both current and future residents. When used responsibly, that stimulates economic growth and supports long term fiscal planning, ensuring the city can meet today's needs while preparing for tomorrow's opportunities. It promotes intergenerational equity by spreading costs fairly over those who benefit from the asset over time, preserves cash flows for day to day operations, and administration also looks at laddering the ventures for different maturity beats. One of the key principles of debt financing is the concept of intergenerational equity. This allows the city to promote fairness by ensuring current taxpayers don't overpay for assets that future users will enjoy. Essentially, those who will be using the asset will help pay for it. This approach encourages long investment in long term projects without creating undue financial strain on one generation. In addition, the city applies the principle of laddering, structuring banks with staggered maturities to spread repayment obligations over time and align debt service with the useful life of assets, further supporting fairness and financial sustainability. Principles optimize debt room, maintaining sufficient borrowing capacity to respond to future needs and opportunities while adhering to legislative and policy limits. This balanced approach supports financial flexibility, sustainability, and fairness across generations. The city primarily finances debt through the Alberta Treasury Board of Finance, which offers competitive fixed interest rates that eliminate market fluctuation risk. The ventures are requested on actual year end project costs with the semi annual servicing debt repayments beginning the following year. This repayment will be an increase to the operating budget in the following year, which may be offset by either through reserves or retirement of existing debts.
And maybe it just said, I think this was mentioned during, uh, it's a complete rabbit hole, but during uh, orientation, uh, but that the preferential lending rates from Alberta, from government of Alberta is thanks in large part to a motion that was put forward by the city of St. Albert to Alberta municipalities lobbying on behalf, and I saw the returnables preferential lending rates. So there's certainly uh, some credit due to the council of the day and administration for it.
Yeah. Yeah. It was a good meeting.
I was the one that spoke to it, so I was amazed it passed.
No worries. Um, that is, so the next one is debt is guided by, uh, debt is a valuable tool for financing major infrastructure, but it must be used strategically and within limits. The city's approach is shaped by both provincial legislation and city policy designed to protect financial health and long term sustainability. So the first limit is the MGA limit, and this ensures that municipalities don't take on more debt that they can reasonably manage. Under this debt limit, the total debt is capped at one point five times the annual revenue, and the debt servicing, which is the annual principal plus interest payments, is capped at zero point two five annual revenue. These limits prevent municipalities from becoming over leveraged, protecting their ability to deliver services and respond to future needs. Second limit that we're going to talk about is the internal, the city's internal limit, which is eighty five percent of the MGA limits. Maintaining an internal debt limit ensures the city can respond to urgent infrastructure repairs and navigate uncertain economic conditions without compromising financial sustainability or future budget flexibility. So example, if the bridge collapsed, or as we saw like with municipalities this year, city Calgary experienced an emergent situation this summer. And all those scenarios in this presentation will be referring to the city's internal debt limit. Finally, there is in in the policy, there is the debt servicing limits, which is eighteen percent of the operating budget for total debt and twelve percent for tax supported debt. These tighter controls reduce financial vulnerability, ensuring the city can maintain service levels even during economic uncertainty. The city repays its debt servicing with two sources, taxes and the off site levy recovery reserve.
Maybe Stan, just before you go next, it should maybe just work from an atmospheric perspective. There are municipalities in Alberta today who are at their limit. Um, so they are all intents and purposes kind of dead in the water, right? As it looks at future initiatives and ongoing investment, it's not a great place to be in. So I think it does speak to the importance that control the city as a place.
Next is the current state. So what you see here is the current approved capital funded projects funded from debt. The first column is the projected outstanding balance of debt for each project at the end of the year. As of December thirty first, twenty twenty five, we are projecting hundred and six point six million of debt outstanding on twelve approved projects. The second column is the outstanding balance to borrow over the life of these projects. There is a hundred and thirteen million to be taken out on council approved projects. The reason why you see an outstanding balance borrow is because the city borrows in stages to reduce interest costs and avoid borrowing more than needed as the ventures are requested based on actual year end project costs. For example, a twenty four million dollar project may have a borrowing bylaw approved for the full twenty four million, but the city might issue three separate debentures of eight million dollars in year one, two, and three as project costs are incurred.
That's an important concept to understand is we're not taking out debt. We're always projecting it based on those year end project costs. So we're never taking out debentures for the city actually needs them. So that's why you're seeing that outstanding balance. Important concept, but there is a timing that those will be coming on.
This graph shows the city's current and projected outstanding debt, including the 113 million for the 12 council approved projects. That's the blue bars compared to our internal debt limit, which is the orange line, which is set at 85% of the MGA limit. Based on the forecast of borrowing for these projects will remain below our debt limit and will continue to build debt capacity as we repay existing debts and as revenues grow. Finance will work with departments and project owners to align borrowing with project project progress and cash flow needs. As the ventures are issued, the blue bar rises. As the debt is repaid, they fall. So the graph represents the net impact of these changes over time.
Stan, that means that's if everything gets approved now and you do nothing else. That's what this, right?
So this next slide is the same information presented in the previous slide, but in dollar amounts. It shows our current internal debt limit, the total debt outstanding, and the remaining debt capacity. With the amount of debt the city's forecast to take on, on approved projects, the city is below the internal debt limits. And the city's borrowing capacity is determined by comparing the total debt we've already have and the debt we expect to take out in future years against the internal debt limit. So key point to understand is this is a point in time snapshot based on current forecasts and assumptions. So approving a new project through debt will reduce future available borrowing capacity. And that may delay the timing of other strategic priorities.
Anytime there's then a decision to fund, then that impacts the debt capacity in that year in the following years. So it's not, it's a chemil of effect, net effect, it's not that you have that capacity available each year.
Next slide is, in addition to the 12 council approved projects, there are nine more in the 10 year plan that are shown in red that are not yet approved and would require debt funding. As we review the current 10 year plan, it is important to understand a few key points. First, the plan is not a comprehensive list of all projects our community will need over the next decade to starting point. Second, even within the plan, some projects will need to be deferred into later years to stay within our financial capacity. Third, the plan does not approve projects council may have heard during their respective campaigns. Project asked to be front loaded by, front ended by developers, requests to advance certain projects sooner and projects not on the 10 year plan, such as Northeast Service. All of these additional impacts will impact the available, the debt limit the same way. And any new projects will require, any new projects added to the plan will require us to defer other projects even further. This is the balancing act we face as we work together to align priorities with fiscal responsibility, including these projects that will bring our total borrowing to 559.
So just, just very quickly again, just a reminder that council controls the 10 year plan, right? And so there's, there's certainly a lot of administrative work that goes into enabling those discussions. But nothing gets added or pulled off this without your approval. It takes council to make that.
Can I ask questions on the police building that is that?
The description's backwards. I missed out. It says police building renovations. That's the new police building and the other one is the renovation.
We're putting in some super nice stuff.
I know, I'm thinking, wow. Okay, I won't ask, I won't ask that question. Forty two million dollars in rentals, okay.
So this is a graph of our current and projected outstanding debt on the 12 approved projects and nine proposed debt funded projects. That were presented in red from the previous slide in the 10 year plan. The blue bars is the amount of debt that we're taking out. And the orange line is our internal debt limit. As you can see, based on the current 10 year plan, we will exceed the city's internal debt limit based on when we project to take out the debt, council would need to defer projects to stay below the internal debt limit. Again, this is the same information presented in the previous slide, but in dollar amounts. This shows our current internal debt limit, the total debt outstanding and the remaining debt capacity. Projects are approved based on the timing in the current 10 year plan. The city will exceed its debt limit in 2030, requiring the deferral of projects into future years. As you can see, if you add up the deficits in 2030 to 33, this would require the city to defer over 200 million in projects to build up debt capacity. The city would slowly build up that capacity starting in 2034, but would require multiple years of deferrals to build up to 200 million.
So that's an important point. So if you can see those items in red from 230, so if you take that 91, the 50, the 49 and 50, that adds up to about 200 million. So it would require 200 million. And so if you're looking at your attachment in from you, in front of you in the 10 year, you're looking at the timing of all the projects above with the consideration of the ones identified in red. 200 million would need to be deferred between 2030 and 2034, and they would need to be deferred until we could build up that 200 million in capacity. So if you look at the next three years, I think from 2034 to 2036, we're only building up back about 100 million. So we're looking at the deferral of 200 million beyond this seven years. And you could phase 100 million back in on those years, but it's until that room gets built up. So it's just to give you that holistic perspective of our current debt situation and decisions to fund and balancing that.
And that deferral of 200 still puts us at our municipal or your policy driven debt limit, right? And so there's still the, the break glass in case of reserve, right? Based on, you know, things happening that were unforeseen beyond that, certainly. But from a policy perspective, right, we wouldn't be incurring additionally debentures because we're at our limit with that 200 deferred. And then, you know, so if I get ahead, tell me to shut up, but right, like, you know, what can you do about it, right? That's ultimately that prioritization envelope that we started talking about. Yeah, they don't do something at all. You move it in time. Vastly reduce the scope or you find alternate funding sources, right? That's kind of, kind of the nuclear space that you've sort of got collectively, right, to look at that.
And then keep in mind that the projects in black in the unfunded list would remain. The city would not have the capacity to fund. So it's just balancing, like Bill said, needs versus needs and the prioritization.
I don't know, and forgive me if I forgot last for one second. When you go down to 2030, what are we assuming that we approved? If this is like, it's not based on what we've approved to date.
It would be all your tenure that you've seen, all this list. So it's the tenure that you see with the recommended plan with that are in the funded list with everything in red on attachment.
Everything in that list is not actually a need, 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 is it?
And your point, counseling, that's where it goes back to, right? Like that discussion on the capital plan. What do you need and when do you need it? Right? And that's the discussion that I'll end up having, right, about that prioritization. And so while we're always looking for alternate funding sources, grants, those types of things, you never bank on it, right?
So again, this is without any other grants.
Correct.
That we just said yes to everything on that plan.
Sort of that, I would say that the supply versus demand.
With transportation projects now like Fowler Way, I mean, with the demise of EMRB and their integrated, are they maintaining the integrated transit? Yeah.
Integrated regional transit. I don't understand the question. EMRB had a growth plan, but they also had a number of supporting documents that they use. One of them was the integrated regional. And so it still exists, right? It's, it's sort of Parkland County is kind of the steward of it right now. So it's not been updated, it's not been refreshed, right? And so, and that to be candid is it's kind of a regional prioritization of transportation related projects. It was actually a really important document that helped us get the cost splitting for rate given drive. Because the region came together and said that's important.
Helps the Duke with their 43rd.
Still exists in its, its old format, but it's.
Yeah, because I related to provincial funding, that's what you're asking is.
Exactly. What it did is advocate on behalf of the region for major transportation projects that would benefit the region. That's why the Duke got their overpass into the, into the airport. And there were other, I just can't remember what the priorities were, but my question is, is like with the demise of EMRB and that, how do, how do we look at getting money from the province for our transportation issues? Because potentially Fowler Way is a regional impact because it takes traffic. We could argue it anyway.
Yeah, I think there's a couple of pieces there, right? The first would be, you know, your advocacy plan, right? And so ensuring that council is speaking with one voice in your engagements with your provincial counterparts. The second is that the very nascent, I'll call it the regional table, because we don't have a good name for it yet, right? Grant request come forward, right, to start looking at what a regional forum could look like. It's not going to be EMRB. But there's the potential there to generate whether it's all 13 member municipalities or a subset of to advocate on behalf of certain issues. But that's, it's an imperfect answer because I think it's still.
Yeah, I, I just was wondering with the demise, like, did everything go away? I know that there were, it got archived in certain places, but like, well, how do you, because that was a lot of really good work.
Other thing I want to add that might be, and you guys can jump in if I'm misstating this, but I believe Fowler Way as well is there's a large portion of Fowler Way that is offsite leavable. And so typically you don't get grants or government funding for offsite leavable projects. That was the difference with rate given drive with the twinning, because the original rate given drive was offsite leavable, but the expansion of it was not, which is why we're kind of able to look to get a funding agreement. So that would be more of the challenge. We might be able to get partial, but, but attention, all of it. So it's still a big.
You'll never hear anyone say the words I or the letters I R T M P anymore. With the exception of hindsight, right? It doesn't technically.
Yeah, okay.
And then just to clarify, councillor Hughes, the ongoing grants and the grants that the city already knows that have been built into these, like this communication of the recommended funding and available deficits. It's just those project specific or ones we apply for specific for those that aren't known about, so that our annuals have been factored in.
Can I just ask clarification on one of the things on there? The police, maybe this is part of that discussion, right? But the police building, 2.6 million, that's something that's already been approved?
Yes, that's a renovation.
That's a renovation, but is that different than four lines? What's the six million in 2028?
Well, that's, so that's go down four, go down four to where they're, they just had a flip on.
Oh, so was it 40? Oh, I see the 42 and the 46.
So, so the unapproved one is the same, 1 million and whatever, and then the building of 42 million? But that hasn't, it hasn't been approved.
And the police, the renovations have already been approved.
And issues are approved and in train and that's meloni and process. Okay, and that's happening already.
To Fowler Way, sorry. If we built it out four lanes, built it out complete, would we then be opportunity for grants from the province? If we could show them necessity?
So I, I would just say, you know, broadly, we'll always be advocating. I wish I could give you a good answer, but you never know what they're going to want to approve and what they aren't. Province is facing a $6.5 billion shortfall. I'm not sure there's going to be a ton of infrastructure coming in the foreseeable.
Question about that. Is there, are we able to do collaboration with neighboring like, like Sturgeon County, for example, to help cover the costs of that because they would you'd like, it's not a non thing.
So there's, you know, the, the, yeah, intermediates collaboration frameworks and the intermunicipal development frameworks or IDP, sorry, development plans that we'll be working on over the next year and a half, right? We'll, we'll caught by some of that stuff along the boundaries, right? So, so we can always talk about it, you know, there, there are models, shared investment for shared benefit. A roadway that is internal to another municipality and is set expectations is probably not super exciting to those of the neighboring piece, something that crosses the boundary. There's a portion thereof that we.
You'd have better luck with Neil Ross.
Yeah, when I would think with most roads and, and you can kind of correct me as well, we would typically never build a twinned road before traffic oriented it. In this case.
But again, I, I would say, I would say the discussions on the specifics of the capital plan. Like write those down, right? Because you'll have the opportunity to have those very in depth. Again, this is indicative as to show you that right now, supply and demand.
And the overus. Okay, so next slide is the why prioritization matters. These are why debt prioritization matters is the city is experiencing a number of external factors challenging financial sustainability.
There's like three sidebars going on.
Trying to figure out where all the roads are. I don't know all the names.
Okay, we're good.
So why debt prioritization? The reason why debt prioritization matters is the city is experiencing a number of external factors challenging financial sustainability. The city is experiencing faster growth than historically experienced, which has led to community pressures for new amenities while also maintaining aging infrastructure as a result of growth. There is an increased expectation for the city to front end roads and utility projects, reduction in provincial funding. In addition to escalating construction costs, has resulted in reduced funding available for capital projects, which is requiring more projects to be considered for debt funding. Due to the increased cost of living from inflation, residents are also more sensitive to tax increases. So the purpose of the prioritization is to create an alternative, an objective way to evaluate projects based on criteria such as health and safety, strategic priorities. So for capitalized capital prioritization to ensure the city maximizes its capital investments, given our finite constraints, all growth projects are reviewed and scored against the capital prioritization matrix. This approach is grounded in a comprehensive framework, which balances payback, ROI, grants, health, safety, environment, strategic priorities, project commitment, and service delivery. Each project is assessed against these dimensions to ensure that resources are allocated effectively and aligned with organizational goals. These are the considerations that are used to formulate the recommended projects in your attachment based on the funding limits, but also provides an additional lens to whether to debt finance a project. Finally, next steps. So the next steps for council and administration are as follows. Council's strategic retreat in February, where council will determine their priorities and administration will present a revised 10 year capital plan with recommendations, recommended additions and deletions guided by council's strategic discussions to council by Q2 2026. It is, it is essential that council has a holistic understanding of the city's funding capacity and how current decisions will impact the ability to fund future projects. This perspective will help inform strategic planning, prioritization, and ensure decisions are made with full awareness of financial implications.
Thanks for your time today and we're taking.
You find some more money between now and then.
So everybody keeps the Christmas card money.
I got one Christmas card that, so please send me Christmas cards. I'm really feeling bad.
I turn the lights off when we leave. How do we, how is it decided which projects are debt funded and which ones aren't? So in the, the nice little chart, we have the ones in red are debt funded and the other ones are not debt funded. They're all debt. But these are all.
Also, all the red ones that are on your attachment are ones that would be considered for debt. They're unfunded based on having the debt capacity. So the decisions would be made mostly on the size and the like the dollar value of the project.
Yeah, we would never have enough grants or reserves or the money to pay for a $50 million.
The scope of the price principally drives the need to finance a good deal. We wouldn't.
Right.
Debt finance 2030, 40 million.
Hey, sorry, let me try again. The little note at the bottom says red font represents debt funded projects and dependent on the long term strategy. So does that mean that the ones that are not red?
Your chart, you're talking about the big table?
The table, it's got the funded part at the top, the unfunded part at the bar, sorry.
That, those are all debt. The red ones have not been incurred.
That, those are all debt. Uh, the red ones have not been incurred yet. We've not been approved.
The black ones are already approved by.
And they're all debt.
They'd have to be debt. If you wanted to approve them, they'd have to be debt financed as the ones.
The municipal development plan is debt.
You're referring to detachment.
Oh, no, sorry, in the, uh, in the.
If you detachment. The current ten year growth plan has. Funding ability on those top ones with considerations, but the ones in red still would be dependent on our debt capacity. And then the ones below would be ones if we were going to consider funding them, but they are in that. Scenario that they're.
Yes, yes, I got that. So all the ones in red are in this area with the ones that are being recommended and not. Uh, but all the ones in, sorry, in the agenda report, page. Thirty, um. That are in black, so like active transportation, municipal development plan, mobile choices strategy, all of those, those are not debt funded.
Yeah, they're not debt funding, but we have the funds, estimated funding forecasting available for those ones, but the ones in black. Below the line, we do.
Aren't correct. Okay. And so I guess that was how. What, and is that because the ones like, for example, I don't know, um. It's a big one here. I guess, I guess it's just scope, like neighborhood park development, six million dollars in twenty thirty or. Transportation road networks for three point six million. Is that because they're low enough? The scope is small enough that they don't need to be debt financed? I guess that was, how do you, how do we determine which ones are? Debt, which ones are like, you know?
It's a balance of the, the dollar value overall, and if we have grants available. But it's mostly, Diane said, it's mostly the dollar value that would drive it if we're a certain amount. I think if you remember, I recall. We only really have an average of five million dollars in. Available funds to fund each year. So that can, can you give you an idea of? Anything outside of that likely, we would be need, a lot of times we need to be.
Five million dollars for capital projects. And that's out of, I guess.
Or it comes from grants, it comes from age ago, from space. Yeah, like that's where, so it's like, that's real cash money that we have available to us.
Yeah, okay.
About five million. So anything that would likely have to be debt funded.
Okay, and, and then how does this relate to? Offsite levies. I'm, I'm coming on a theme today, offsite levies, but for example, so we've got a sixty. Three million dollars for Lakeview Business District in there. So we take out the loan. And then as we recover those levies over the next however many years, does that go directly back against that loan?
We also, regardless of how anything's funded by debt or. We take on the debenture, it all goes against the same debt limit. So that's an important. Point to understand. The actual payback of, um, with the offsite levies, the portion that they're seeing are covered from like. There's, when they say they're offsite levy recoverable. Um, that means then. I'll actually back up one. The ones usually that you've made. The scene, the offsite levy projects that we've. Made the decision for as a city to fund, they're showing up. On this list or. That's why you're seeing Lakeview on this. Otherwise, there is offsite levy ones that have not yet been included, but that would be a decision. That there's a policy in place that's underway, the front ending policy that would make decisions regarding to fund it. And then the next, um, factor is the payback. So. When you're talking about the payback, there's two components of paybacks to offsite levies. One is the offsite levy. Um, model that planning and engineering, and that's where you're seeing, um, we'll go into more detail on. In a, in another week on how that all formulates. But there's also. A component that's an offsite levy recovery reserve that covers the principal and interest payments. So there's two components to offsite levies that the cities covers, which will go into detail next week. And that is a reserve that's used to fund the debt and interest payments so that they don't. Impact taxes. But there's a whole other, um, there's kind of two components to offsite levies. There's the offsite levy itself. And then there's the payment of that, those p- payments.
I'm not, I want to jump in and add a little bit more to that.
Yeah, I do more of that.
Yeah, so, so at the end of the day. Uh, like Ms. Victor said, whatever debt we take out, whatever it's for, whoever owns the infrastructure at the end of the day, it all comes out of one debt. Whether it's municipal projects, front ending offsite levy infrastructure, it all comes out of one debt, debt level. At the end of the day, as a city, when we take out debt, we are legally responsible to pay for that debt. Regardless of what happens with the development industry, right? But we also know that. We have fairly steady developments, right? And so as subdivisions come on or as, as development happens, those developers are paying their offsite levies. So we take basically are using that money to pay the debt. So we're not making, asking the taxpayers to pay for it. We know we have money coming in from the development industry that's covering those debts and we have a pretty, um, pretty robust model. Um, that estimates how much money we're expecting to get in so that we know we can cover those debt payments. Um, we have a, a buffer in that reserve or by policy. So there's a policy, if you'd be interested in reading it, the offsite of a recovery fund policy. Which requires us to keep a bit of a buffer. So that if development is a little slower than we anticipated and we're not bringing, we don't bring in as much money in a given year, we kind of have a buffer. Um, so that we know, know we'll be able to make that pay. But, but. We, we are actually legally responsible. So we will talk about at some point, there is always the risk that if development. Were too slow by a certain amount, at some point we have to make that debt payment, right? And so if we don't have the money to do it from, from the developer levies. Ultimately, it would have to come. From the taxpayer, right? But we have lots of strategies in place to, to help mitigate that and to give us multiple years warning that we're potentially getting into. Could be potentially getting into an issue. So I want to say, I, I don't want to say it's a, a risk that's not being managed. It's certainly being managed. Um, through policy and through a lot of analytics, um, but that, that ultimate risk is still there.
We'll be going into more detail on that next. On that, those components.
All right, sorry, Monday.
Uh, one is the, that model. Will you show us that? And my second quote, like to understand the sensitivity of that and what you're. I think it would help clarify, like, understand, just seeing it. And two, I'd ask too, how fast she's gonna develop.
Well, yeah, you, you, you'll see the model insofar as you approve the bylaw annual, right? And so offsite levies come forward. Uh, the offsite levy working group works through it. And then ultimately it comes to council for approval and. Right? In terms of what the next year looks like, we do annual refreshes so that assumptions can always be validated, changed, altered to match reality moving forward, right? But that's, that's the process.
Yeah, and, and as I was mentioning, that offsite levy recovery fund policy, which is in your council policy list. Um, I would suggest potentially reading that before because basically the model is built. To make sure that we adhere to the standards that we developed within that policy. So the rate, um, the, the model itself is like this. Frigging Bergantuan cell model with ten thousand pages. Like, I'm not, I'm not sure. Helpful it will be to show the actual model. We can take a look at it and maybe.
The accountant, he might want to see that.
Cause the sensitivity comes up of like, if we front end the infrastructure. In the northeast and development slows, at some point the model will catch up and it'll become tax supportive debt. And so we're just trying to understand because respectfully, then the development community is saying, well, we're gonna develop. And we're saying, well, we're not sure how fast we're gonna develop, but according to the model, you have some sensitivities built in there and just trying to understand that, but maybe that.
At what point do you? Yeah, so we actually do have a field that we can play around with. So we take the offsite levy model, which is managed by engineering. So they. Have a whole plan of, of, based on a whole bunch of, um, data that they know of, that they estimate how many acres. Or hectares of land are going to be developed in what areas and what years. So based on that, we know how much levies we would be kind of collecting. So our model also allows us to say, I actually think we have our model immediately set. At only ninety five percent of that as, as an initial sensitivity. But we can play with that and say, okay, well, development was only eighty percent of what we projected, or if it was only seventy five, like at what point do you get? Into trouble. So we do have the ability to do that. And that's why I'm saying. We have, we would get multiple years of warning if we were kind of getting into that situation so that we could help hopefully develop some other strategies to mitigate. But having, also having that, um. Buffer within that reserve. So basically what it says when you read the policy is like, we basically have to have almost three years worth of debt payments. Kind of in the payback, right? So that if, if the annual money coming in. Um, isn't sufficient to pay the debt in one year, we've got a bit of reserve that helps to cover that. So. It would give us a lot of, a lot of warning, but yes, we, we absolutely can do that sensitivity, you know?
So, and so when. So if, when council is making those decisions, we would look at that specific like sensitivity. If there is capacity, we're, we're in that. Policy that we do think, hey, are we close to that sensitivity? We would communicate that to council. Um, so just like we'd be communicating, if it's not offsite leavable, that there, what the estimated tax impacts would be based on, is there? Um. Debt retiring within the five years before that we can offset it per policy, we do that. So we would communicate. What's the debt room? What's the impact on the debt cap limit? That, and then the debt servicing. And the tax impact. And then in addition, if it was offsite levy, we would do those same things. But then we would be communicating. That sensitivity and if it would be able to be funded from that reserve. And if there was mere the sensitivity, then what? The potential tax impact would be. If it can't be.
Tax impact would probably outlive. Like the, if you say you need three years of reserve, like we could be well outside this four year term. And that's where if the model's a twenty five year model or whatever it is, is understanding at what point does it become potentially? That people are gonna look back in fifteen years and say you made decisions today that. Didn't get us until fifteen years later, whatever that number is. It's just trying to understand.
And that's, and that's why you're consistently using those principles of that laddering. To make sure we're balancing and forecasting that in any of those years, we're going to be within that limit, we're estimating the impact of. Of that tax impact and impact on the limit. So it's that, it's balancing that intergenerational equity. Balancing the laddering. Right now, even when we made decisions on debentures. It's evaluating the term to balance that, to free up that capacity, but also ensure that we're. We're monitoring those impacts, but not only just for five years out. It's for. The ten to fifteen, twenty years we're estimating those. So we're always watching that to leverage that. But it is, um, like Ms. McMorris said. When we're, if you were ever to get into development slowdown on that, that particular, there is. It can get a little bit dicey, but.
Or layers, right? And so overall, ten year capital plan, the debt management over time on that. And then I think, you know, to part of certainly what you're saying. A portion, a project or a big muscle of an internal that ten year plan, there's, you know, the return on that one all the time, right? And one, one sort of begets or informs the other. So, you know, we, we do. Uh, are able to have those discussions if you're looking at approving, uh, you know, a fairly complex servicing of basin as an example. You know, what would that look like based on our model and forecasting over time and are, is there a risk? That's the type of discussion we bring forward to inform your decision.
That is why, and that's a great question, Mayor Livia. We want to make sure that we're providing this holistic view. So that any decisions that you're making, we're, we're trying to communicate what the potential impact is to everything that you're looking at in that. Next ten years. So that's, that is the purpose of today is to give. Is that holistic view on future years impacts? A great question.
I only have a question. When, when do we? I, I guess for, dig into some of the details on some of these capital projects. That's a council meeting in the future sometime or. Teach your plan.
There'll be the, you know, one on one engagement to sort of inform going forward and then you'll get all this stuff and the hopes is you'll sort of read it and digest it and that'll be part of.
When did we take? Two terms ago or one term ago, we went through it, we went through. The unfunded. It took like two hundred and thirty something million off of it already, right? That was two years ago. Here, yeah, so. Have fun.
And, and that is something like. Like Mr. Fletcher said. Council owns the ten year growth capital plan, so it is driven by. A prioritization of council that we've heard from the community. And so we come to in court in around quarter one. February timeline to add and subtract. And a lot of them are maybe making some recommendations to defer projects out because of course, the next steps is. Where is the ability to? Look at our funding, our debt capacity, and then scenario those out and work with councils. Say if these are your top priorities. This is what we can do, this is what we can't. So. The, the more realistic, those ads and true tracks and like Counsel Mackay said, deferrals. That optimizes, um, us coming back with better scenarios.
Did, uh, we do this sensitivity analysis with Lakeview with sixty two and a half million dollars and at what point?
Yes, we did.
Installs there.
So, so we'll bring that forward on the fifteenth there.
Lakeview on the fifty.
Or sorry, not Lakeview. Bring that forward on the.
So.
Yeah, but there, there was significant. But what a development.
So.
Just experiencing.
Yeah, so the one thing else I have to remember as well is, is the way that the offsite levies come in is we're not, we don't have like necessarily basis. So we're not talking necessarily. You can't look at least Lakeview in isolation from other front ended projects, right? Like we get our offsite levy recovery funds from, from. Projects that we have front ended in the past that we're now collecting the money back that goes into, goes into that fund. Um, it's, it's for you citywide. So if one area slowed, but the other area was still fine or did better, that's, that's still fine. We look at it on a, on a holistic basis.
Is there enough outside of Lakeview to fund Lakeview in the event that it doesn't develop at the pace we're expecting it to?
Depends how much slower, right? Like we have, we have a development, um, estimate. Um, so it depends if it's, if it's probably only five percent below or ten percent below, we're probably okay. It's a, you know, so it's that sensitivity of at what point? Does it start causing risk?
So on, on the modeling, I would say that we took a bit of a. A little bit more of a conservative bet on, on that, right? To protect against some of that, right? There, there's always the risk that. Build it and no one comes. Right? Uh, that's, that's the whole purpose behind the accelerator fund right now. Obviously the, uh, the investment attraction efforts that are ongoing, but we took a fairly conservative estimate. When we modeled it out between everything's awesome and everything's horrible, uh, right? We kind of tried to take the middle ground, that approach and that also recommended. Uh, you know, there were, you know, Donnie, correct me if I'm wrong on the numbers, right? But I think there was the, the high end investment in Lakeview was over a hundred million dollars. That, that the city could have done, right? Um, and we went sort of a middle ground, open up Lakeview, but not exquisitely, um, develop it out.
And I was, I was just gonna, just to end it, not to question the decision to fund Lakeview in the past and what went into that, um. But we're at a position where we're a couple of years out and we don't have development. I mean, there, there's speculation, which is fantastic. Um, hopeful that it's gonna move, but then we have a northeast with residential development that developers are saying we want to develop. It's, we're now worried about the sensitivity to timing of it. Where it feels like there is something concrete there. Correct me if I'm wrong, but like just the positioning of those two. And I mean, I get it. We only have so much that we can borrow two. And you have to look at that laundry list. I didn't realize the amenity site's a hundred and sixty eight million dollars. Um, but deciding where you want to focus that dollar value and.
I think that's the prioritization discussions that council has to have.
Yeah, okay.
Can I circle back to something you said then? You said there's no, it's not a basin approach, so. Um, Lakeview. For offsite levies. Who, who pays the offsite levies for Lakeview or who pays the offsite levies for northeast?
The benefiting parties for those areas.
Right, for that. Okay.
Yeah.
So it is the benefiting party. So there is a.
They're paying it, but I guess what I'm saying is, is. You look at the money that we're getting in from off, offsite levies from the whole city, from all the developments that are happening. And as long as that's enough to cover our debt payments.
Oh, I see.
Regardless of where they are, like I'm not relying just on the lake necessarily money to pay that particular debt.
So if, so we've, if we've got debt out for Lakeview and, and if we were to hypothetically, let's say have debt out for northeast. And northeast proceeds. A lot faster than Lakeview or vice versa, Lakeview proceeded it, as long as the overall money coming in is enough to pay our debt payments.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Um, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Well, I mean, I could take a few off right now, but that's not, now's not the time, right? When?
That's strategic.
Okay, okay, okay. I was thinking Riverside Connect.
Uh, no, can't do that either. Go away.
There's any other?
No, no, I'm, no, no.
Uh, yeah, so if you're good team, yeah, I, I see you very much.
I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Wanna do the.
Somebody like.
And thirty one C of the access. Information.
Information.